Councilmember, Agency Director Mann.
Present.
Marcus.
Here.
Cilio.
Is here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
Do we have a quorum?
Thank you. Pastor Jeremy Whitman from Lancaster Baptist.
Shall we pray together? Father in heaven, thank you for being a God that hears and answers our prayer and delights in doing so. Lord, I thank you for the promises that you've given in your word according to that statement. Lord, I'm thankful for the privilege that I have to raise my family here in the Allen Valley, thankful that you moved me here 20 years ago. Lord, I care a great deal about what takes place in my city, and I know the elected officials that you've placed before us care as well, and I know there's a great deal of people that care, many of which will come and bring their concerns tonight. And Lord, it is our desire that you would supersede over this meeting. Lord, I'm thankful for the words on the back wall because it is truly our desire to trust completely and totally in you. We ask for you to provide wisdom beyond the training and education of everybody in this room, and that, Lord, you would allow us to give the ear that we need to, to the cry of the people, and that we would then act to bring about resolution and bring about solutions to the needs of our city. Lord, we're thankful that we have a place like Lancaster where we can raise our families, and as to this end, Lord, we're asking for you to be involved in this meeting. May you be honored and glorified, and we pray this and ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mayor Hearns, you want to lead the pledge allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor, and all of you, to the great, great country called America covered by the blood of our Lord and Savior. Would you put your right hand over your heart and let us begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Potter, are you here?
I'm here, sir.
Good. And is Andrew here?
Andrew's here, sir.
Easy. Larry Gruber, sir. This is a genuine hero. We don't have too many of those. But he actually saved a life not too long. And he also plays baseball while we're at it. He's pretty good at it. And on behalf of the City of Lancaster, we have a commendation from all of the council and not too many people at all, so normally just one. On July 12, 2008, Andrew Potter actually saved the life of a drowning victim. He was seven years old. He saw him struggling. He took decisive action, and he saved a life on behalf of the City of Lancaster. This is for you. Captain has something for you. The civilian woman Sheriff Rutter's office. Larry Gruber's got something for you. Okay. Well, you know, one of the things that our veteran deputy sheriffs on the Sheriff's Department do really well is see situations, assessing them properly, and then taking some kind of proper action to remedy the situation. And we have a young man here who's able to do that, and he hasn't even had any training yet at the Sheriff's Academy, so we're very, very proud of him, and I want to present him with this certificate of appreciation from the Sheriff's Department. But first, I want to ask him a question. When are you going to be ready to join the Sheriff's Department? We have a great deal of appreciation for a young man who's able to make those kinds of decisions and assessments and save lives. It says, "Certificate of appreciation for heroic actions awarded to Andrew L. Potter in recognition for the heroism you displayed upon rescuing a seven-year-old boy from drowning. Your immediate response definitely saved the life. The Lancaster Sheriff's station will salute you." Thank you very much. Andrew, it's a real pleasure to meet you. You know, most people, when they see a situation and they don't know immediately what's going on, will think it far, too far, until it's past help. And you saw and you acted on behalf of my boss, the civilian woman Sheriff Rutter, her husband, State Senator George Rutter, the 17th District. I'm very pleased to present you this California State Lieutenant's Certificate of Recognition. And it's really brief. I just want to read it because I think the words mean something. "Whereas Andrew Potter came to the rescue of seven-year-old Harrison Atrezam and saved him from drowning, whereas Andrew exhibited heroic bravery and maturity by not hesitating to come to Harrison's rescue, whereas Andrew is an exemplary young man, his behavior should be a model for other young people and friends in our state and nation. Resolved by Senator George Rutter and civilian member Sheriff Rutter that they take immense pleasure in congratulating Andrew Potter on his heroism in saving a life, commend him for his maturity and selflessness, and convey sincere best wishes for his future success dated this 12th day of August 2008. Congratulations and well done." Thank you. Hey, good job.
Mayor, let me say one word or two. I want to thank Bishop Hearns, Mayor Hearns. I want to thank Rod Murchaney and Dan McBride, coaches that have really contributed to Andrew's upbringing and his stability in his mind and thinking and the way he is today. I want to thank you.
His dad probably had something to do with that.
And the city. Thank you very much.
City manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Anything on the agency consent calendar the council wants to move for, pull for discussion, or anyone else for that matter? So we're good to go?
Move to adopt the agency's consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is it unanimous? Anything on the council consent calendar? Anybody wants to pull for discussion?
Move to adopt the council's consent calendar.
Second?
I second that.
Unanimous. Okay, we have a report from the planning director. Ryan Ludke.
Thank you, Mayor Paris and members of the city council. The item that's before you this evening is the adoption of the city's housing element that would cover the time period from 2006 to 2014 in accordance with the laws of the state of California. The Planning Department and other departments within the city have been working on this for a number of months in order to meet the timelines that the state demands on the housing element. Although the housing element is a part of the city's general plan, it is rather unique in that it is the only element that the state requires separate review and certification on. In this case, that is done by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Essentially, what a housing element is, is an analysis of what the city has done during the past planning period to meet identified housing needs, what its current needs are, and what it will do in the future to ensure that the opportunity to meet those needs is available. I think that's really a key thing to understand. The state does not require by law that the city commit or even participate in the construction of the housing. What it does do is say that you must provide adequate sites and an adequate opportunity for the private sector or any partnership that you may enter into to provide those units. We feel that the housing element that is before you does those things. We have done a number of steps to ensure public participation in the creation of this housing element, starting with a scoping meeting that occurred in October of 2007. We disseminated the draft housing element for public review on May 1 of 2008. We also sent it at that time to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their review. On the 16th of June, we asked our planning commission to review and make a recommendation on the element to you. They voted unanimously to recommend to you its adoption. On the 1st of July, we received back from the State Department of Housing and Community Development a number of comments where they felt there needed to be changes or modifications in the document to comply with state law. Upon close review of their comments, we found that much of what they were asking for was simply clarification or expansion of information that was already in the document. You have attached to your staff report that letter that we received from them. We have made those changes in the document. We feel that we have addressed their concerns, and we feel that what you have in front of you now is a certifiable element under the requirements of state law. Therefore, we would recommend to you that you adopt this housing element. Once you take that action, we will transmit it to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their certification. A final note that I'd like to make is that the housing element is an important component for many of the things that the city is trying to do, particularly our neighborhood revitalization and revitalization efforts in the downtown. Quite often, having a certified housing element is a major factor in whether the state determines to fund a particular project within our community, and we have been fortunate over the past few years because of having that certified housing element that we've been able to obtain funding for projects, senior housing, and other things that we might not have otherwise gotten without that certified housing element. So needless to say, having this element is an important component of our overall strategy, both for neighborhood revitalization and in particular, our downtown revitalization effort. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, the record needs to reflect that you did in fact open the public hearing before that testimony.
Before he just did his thing? I don't know how to turn back the clock.
I'm sure the city clerk will know.
Let the record reflect that I opened the public hearing. Turn it back. We have any speaker cards?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any communications?
No, sir.
Any discussion, motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 0877.
I will second that motion.
Let's vote. Council Agenda Item 1, that's the consolidated election issue, and Mr. Bozidion, if you could report to us.
Mayor Paris and city council members, I have a brief report on this item. Let me start by saying my report will not address the advisory vote. I think the council needs to determine what to do with the advisory vote. I think in retrospect, there was some confusion on that, but my report will address the facts of consolidating an election and some that have been discussed. The first is the cost. There is no cost savings whether you go to a consolidate election or we run our own election. As an example, this election costs the city $119,000. If we would have had the county do this particular election, it would have cost $115,000. That's a slight negligible savings. Why I say there's no cost savings is we can control our costs. We can't control costs of an entity we contract with to do it. Those costs could go up, for example, if the county decided to use a different county mechanism, add fees, different voter machines, whatever that may be. The second item is turnout. There's been lots of discussion about the effect of consolidated elections or standalone elections on voter turnout. What we've been able to look at around the state and the most comparable, which is our neighbor to the south, that doesn't appear to be the case. Over the last four elections, Lancaster was higher in voter turnout twice. Palmdale was higher twice. I think that the most comparable election would have been the last election, Palmdale in November of '07 and Lancaster in April of '08. Both were, I would characterize as fairly contentious elections with different issues before the voters. Lancaster's return was 20.5%, and Palmdale's return was 16%. The third item, and from staff's perspective, I believe the most important, is the service element. I can unequivocally state that the service that the citizens get in running our own election is significantly better than they would get from the county in several ways. One, service to the voters. Right now, when voters turn in absentee ballots or want to vote by mail or whatever, our city clerk reviews all of those, and they call. If there's a mistake on them, they personally call each and every person that turns something in and say, "Hey, there's a mistake. You want to come in? You want to re-sign it? We can send you something else out." Also with the candidates. Candidates, there's a lot that candidates have to do, as you all can attest. You have to deal in terms of ballot statements, initially getting documents and stuff, and I would hope that you would agree that our city clerk, I think, treats the candidates very well as well, too, with personal attention instead of going to Norwalk where you would do it. And the last is that the returns are out significantly earlier than in a consolidated election. If it sounds like I am biased for it, I am, and I always have been, but as city manager, I recommend to you, putting aside the advisory vote, that the service, the cost, and the turnout you get are better than we would get with a consolidated election. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any communications?
No, sir.
Okay, the first speaker is Darlene Peterson.
You know, this is a dirty job, and somebody has to do it. Can I raise this up? I thought I was getting stooped shoulder because of my old age, but this is the cause.
I didn't know it did that.
I didn't either. Okay. The fight against crime in Section 8 that you people are doing is commendable. However, we have some other problems that are very serious, and I think we should do something about those. Some of you have a hearing problem and the inability to understand if you do hear. So why do people say we're not going to vote because it doesn't count anyway? Well, you just prove their point when you do what you did on the measures A and B.
Wait, but we haven't done anything yet, Mrs. Peterson.
No, but the writing is on the wall.
Okay.
At least one of you deemed the citizens as confused on those advisories A and B. Please keep in mind that three of you new council members were elected by the same confused electorate. Should we declare your wins null and void? That would be fair. It's not your job to evaluate our frame of minds, even if you had the ability. Measures A and B got more percentage than any of you. None of you received a majority in 2006 and 2008, but you're still sitting up there. You got what you wanted. It behooves this council to represent us, not evaluate us, and father us. If you believe we're going to sit quietly in the corner while you give us the father knows best routine, you're the ones who are confused. In spite of what you think, you do not walk on water, but we mere morals can walk down the street and chew gum at the same time. Please don't take the words "city fathers" literally. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Pelco.
I would like to quote from an article from the AP Press from April 26, 2007. It's called "Timing's All: Ballot to Ask When Is Best for Voting." This is a quote from Mr. Ron Smith. "There should be the voice to the people. If the people say we love our city election, then we keep it. And if the people say, 'No, I think it should be in November,' then we move it to November." So it seems that you've made the point for the citizens, Mr. Smith. And, oh, by the way, Mr. Paris, if you seem to have a problem getting here at 5 o'clock to the council meeting, you might want to move it up to 6.
Any other speaker cards? Thank you very much. Any discussion?
I want to start off. Although I think that the city manager could have went into a much more deeper elaboration, I'd like to speak on behalf of some of the points that he made. I truly believe that having an election held on a local base is probably would give at least the individuals that are running better service because I think that I myself was one of those individuals that was a benefactor of getting communication from Ms. Bryan, and I'm a strong believer that when you hand something either to the county or to the state, usually it's mismanaged. And so I'm kind of torn between this. I also understand what the intent was a little over a year ago when the decision was made to put this on the ballot. And before there is a vote taken or there's a motion made, I want to make sure that everybody understands, at least from my point of view, that I'm torn between knowing what the benefactor is for the city and having a local election run by the city of Lancaster. I truly believe that, from my standpoint, we would be the benefactors, but in the case of looking at the advisory vote and seeing how unanimous it was, it's 73%. When there's a vote taken tonight, whatever the motion may be, I'm going to vote in favor of the people that voted unanimous with 73%, so that's my comment.
As one of the council members who was here when we made the decision to put an advisory vote on the ballot, to refresh everyone's memory, the reason why we did put an advisory vote on the ballot is that there was a lot of discussion among the five council members over which was better, November or April, and there's good arguments for each date. We could not come to a solid consensus, and at, I believe it was Mr. Vice Mayor Smith's request, that we put an advisory vote out to the people to see what they felt. And in fact, Vice Mayor Smith had some very eloquent wording, and I would like to reread some of that because I think it's applicable, and I'm not sure I could say it better myself. "Voting is the lifeblood of democracy, and voting is very personal." This is from April 24, 2007 council meeting. He stated that "The council should not make an immediate decision. It's something that is important should be left to the people that vote." He stated, "Make a motion at the councils, make this an advisory vote on April 2008, and let the people decide." Anyone else?
I'm not done yet.
He went on further and stated that while he enjoys the standalone election, there's a large portion of registered voters who want a consolidated election in November. It should be left up to the people to decide, and hopefully, the council that is elected should listen to the voice of the people. In April, and in our staff report tonight, we have the numbers. Consolidating to November of 2011, there were 51.2% who said yes, 48.7% that said no. A majority, but not by much. Consolidating to November of 2009 was 72.9% in favor and 27% opposed, almost three to one in favor of moving it to November 2009. In order to do that, that's going to take, I believe, three of us, Vice Mayor Smith, Mayor Paris, and myself to agree to shorten their terms by several months. I'm willing to do that.
I'm not. Go on.
That's about the end of what I have to say.
You know, Vice Mayor Smith has been taking the brunt of way too many things for far too long, and I requested that he stay silent on this. And when you sit there and laugh at your vice mayor, that is the most disrespectful thing I can imagine. This is a serious issue that he's bringing up for you to respond to, to openly discuss, and to make a decision about. This is not a throw dark contest at Vice Mayor Smith, despite how two of the council members would like it to be. This is an issue about how well we determine what Lancaster does in relationship to the county. Now, if somebody had got up here and told me one thing that this county does well for the city of Lancaster, other than the Sheriff's Department, I might be more receptive, but turning over our self-determination to the county is probably the most despicable thing any of us could do. So let's remember, that's an issue here. Do we really want the county of Los Angeles determining how we vote and when we vote? I don't think so. The reason I don't think so is because whoever drafted this ballot advisory thing just didn't do a very good job, and I think the drafters of it will admit to that. And I think one of the reasons for that is the language you folks decided on was decided on at 11:30 at night, which is precisely why the meeting starts at 5 o'clock, because people make stupid decisions at 11:30 at night. And that's what happened in this particular case. Show me on that ballot where the people had the choice of leaving it alone. You know, that was a choice they could have made, but for some reason, that was left off the ballot. If we want to do an initiative for the people to change it and turn this over to the county, perhaps we should do that. But let's be really clear about why those people who are supporting this are supporting it. It's because it requires people who want to run for the city council to drive all the way to Norwalk, which is a two, two-and-a-half-hour drive if you're doing it in traffic. When you get there, they will throw all the forms you have to fill out across the counter to you. They might even hand it to you nicely, but they do not help you fill it out. They do not encourage people to get involved in the city election, and there is a political faction in this community that absolutely recognizes that they might have a better shot at taking over this city if less people ran. I mean, let's be totally honest about what's really going on here. This is an attempt to get less people to run for the city council, and it's nothing other than that. Now, if we're not going to save any more money and less people are going to vote, and that's what the current analysis of this demonstrates, is that less people vote if we do it in November, how does that make sense to anybody? Now, if Mrs. Peterson... It's because it requires people who want to run for the city council to drive all the way to Norwalk, which is a two, two-and-a-half-hour drive if you're doing it in traffic. When you get there, they will throw all the forms you have to fill out across the counter to you. They might even hand it to you nicely. But they do not help you fill it out. They do not encourage people to get involved in the city election. And there is a political faction in this community that absolutely recognizes that they might have a better shot at taking over this city if less people ran. I mean, let's be totally honest about what's really going on here. This is an attempt to get less people to run for the city council, and it's nothing other than that. Now, if we're not going to save any more money, and less people are going to vote, and that's what the current analysis of this demonstrates, is that less people vote if we do it in November, how does that make sense to anybody? Now, if Mrs. Peterson and Mr. Pelco want to start a recall, they should do it against the mayor and leave Mr. Smith alone. Okay? But as it sits, I have no intention of changing this election date. Now, if you two guys want to do a proper initiative where the voters can decide to shorten our terms, let's put it on the ballot, and I'll vote for that. But what I won't do is do a push-poll, and that's exactly what this was. You give the voters two choices. They can have it in November this year, or they can have it November in this year, and they have no choice about leaving it alone. Tell me how that's a proper vote. It wasn't. I don't think it was done on purpose. I think it was done with a great deal of stupidity at 11:30 at night. Sorry, Ron, but you shouldn't do these things at 11:30 at night. They just don't turn out very well. That's my opinion. If somebody wants to make a motion, let's make the motion and let's vote.
Mr. Mayor, the agenda on this is for a discussion only.
Oh, really? Maybe we've got to do this again?
If you want to take an action, one, you don't have to do anything, and everything stays the same. But if you wanted to do something, it would be to direct staff to bring the appropriate ordinance and resolutions back at a future meeting.
Okay. I'd also like to thank Bill Warford at the Antelope Valley Press for bringing to our attention that fewer people vote if we make this change than if we leave it alone. I think we should do whatever we can to increase voter participation rather than diminish it. If somebody wants to put it on the agenda next time for a vote, I'll be happy to put it on.
I would like to say just...
I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it. They're going to shoot at you.
I'm never afraid of that. You know, there was one other thing that was not brought up, and that is that even some very politically astute people in the city have always thought that a consolidated election would put us in with the same election as the Assembly and the state elections. In that way, it would boast it. And that...
Turn your mic on, too.
It is on. That's the green light.
You've got to get closer to it.
Okay, I'll get closer to it.
Thanks. And it doesn't consolidate it on those dates. We don't have it at the same time the presidential election or the gubernatorial or the Assembly is. And so that's one thing that wasn't brought up also. And, you know, unfortunately, Councilman Cilio, I think my words were accurate, and they're still accurate. I always have to bring up a personal point, of course. But the one thing is I still stand, and I agree with Mayor Paris, is that that third choice was not given to the people. A lot of people came to me and talked to me after the election and said, "I felt like I had to pick one or the other. The third choice was keep it with the city." And that choice wasn't given to them. And so I agree with the mayor 100 percent on what he's saying for the future.
Mayor Paris, I did want to say one thing, is I remember when we were getting ready to vote, and I remember a lot of people asking me, "What does this mean?" Because it was confusing at the time. And right now, when we're trying to take things away from the county and the way it's run, like Section 8, I don't see why we would let the county have this. I think we need to keep it right where it's at, and that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
If I could just make one last comment.
Yes.
Well, I'm sure you firmly believe that this is an effort by you two guys. April 24, 2007, and November 13, 2007, it was voted for by five members, and that was unanimously, one of whom's here in our front row.
You could have done a better job. You drafted it poorly. It was not a decision. It was a push-poll. That's exactly what it was. And quite honestly, we're going to be dealing with a lot of the past mistakes the previous council made. One of them's on the agenda today. The reason I'm objecting to the way you've done this is the way you point the finger at Vice Mayor Smith instead of just staying on the issue. This really doesn't have anything to do with Vice Mayor Smith. There's an issue here. It can go either way. It's an issue that is open debate, that is a legitimate discussion that anybody could have. But when you personalize things to the vice mayor, that is precisely why I get upset and say "you guys," because you factionalize it based on personalities instead of the issue. If people really want to do this in November, let's put it on the ballot, have an initiative, and take it out of our hands. But having advisory opinions that are pushed in one direction or the other are just a scam. And that's all this was. It was a scam. It did not give the voters a choice as to leave the election alone, and it did not inform the voters that there are less people would be voting. If it hadn't been for Bill Warford's article, I don't think anyone, any of us would have recognized that we were going to diminish the voter turnout. There are two issues I'm addressing to you. If you're going to personalize this at the vice mayor, I'm going to take offense, and I'm going to respond accordingly. If you want to keep it on the issues, keep it on the issues, and it won't be you two guys.
Let me be specific on the issue. There's arguments for and against April and November, but I think what trumps that is the vote of the people. I think our voters are brighter than Florida voters. They can figure out how to say no to both items and leave it right where it's at.
It's unfortunate that their council was not. Now, if we could go on.
Mr. Mayor, in all due respect, I mean, obviously, it's pretty clear, your position and your feelings, and I think that we've got a, it sounds like to me, a majority of the council that feels the same. In all due respect, I would assume, and somebody would need to correct me, this supposed that we adopted Measure A, it not only shortens the three immediately, but I would assume that it would also shorten the other two of us as well, if I do the math correctly, because if the election's being held in April, we would also be shorting our own length of term by the same number of months. It's just it's, because we're voted in the opposite two years. So what I'd like not for us to do is, clearly, there was an understanding, and I concur with you. I think sometimes there's poor decision-making when we're working in the 11th hour, so I don't want to debate that. But if that's the case, then I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to bring it back and for us to take action to bring it back in the next election. I know it'll affect me. It was going to affect me either way, if it became a yes vote. And I would like to see that it does get drafted properly, and there is clarity. And I think that the people needs to fully understand as well, just like I said, I fully understand the benefits, from my point of view, this is a personal point of view, of running in the last election. I appreciate having Jerry give us counseling and direction. I don't know if you've, you received some, but I know that I personally did. And I know what it's like getting in the car and driving down to wherever the...
Norwalk.
Norwalk. And I've been down to Norwalk before, and you shake your head because you're just another person, and they really don't care. But I think there needs to be clarity so that people can clearly choose. So my preference would be not to sweep it under the carpet. If we're not in agreement from a majority standpoint to take action for this next election, then I say allow the staff to craft it appropriately, make sure that we're all in agreement where we're not voting on something at 11 o'clock at night, put it back on the ballot, and let them choose wisely, and give them three choices so that there's clarity.
Will you take care of that, Mr. Bozigian?
I'd like some clarification...
Do we need a motion?
Well, you wouldn't need a motion, but I'd like some clarification if it passes. Are you talking about another advisory vote, or are you talking about an initiative?
No. I mean, if we're going to do it, do an initiative.
Sure.
But do it so that they know what they're...
Because I fully support what Mayor Paris said. I think there was some confusion. I assumed that when I voted no on my opposition, that I was voting against moving it in either of the two periods of time. That's how I viewed it. So I think just the five of us, we've all got, may have a different interpretation. And I had several people in the public side say, "Wait a minute. There's some unclarity here." So I think that we, oh, if it was not handled appropriately, as you said, and I believe fully it was, do I think handing something to the state or the county is the right thing to do? I think that's crazy. I just, I think that's crazy. I would prefer us...
Let's take a vote on that. Do all of us agree it's crazy to turn anything over to the county?
Aye.
You can vote, too.
But I think, and in all due respect, because we were going to, whatever the case may be, if we took action on it, it was going to shorten everybody's term. But I think we just ought to do it appropriately, and then we'll, I don't want someone to think, at least not while I'm sitting as a council member, to think that now that we've got some of this out publicly, because I think that we could have an article written where there's some clarity about the pros and cons. Clearly, as I know, we know the county can't handle their budgets, and we clearly know the state sure can't. And I'm really uncomfortable knowing in the future handing something over to the county or to the state, knowing what we know about their ability to control cost. I just think that we ought to put some clarification, give the choices, and let it ride with the next election.
I don't have any problem with that in any respect. And if we're going to go in that direction, the one thing we need to consider is Mr. Bozigian and I have been meeting with Mayor Edford and the city manager of Palmdale about figuring out what things in the Antelope Valley should be regionalized. And this might be something we want to add to the discussion. I don't know if it is or it isn't. But the mayor in Palmdale is, has some wonderful ideas about how we can start taking some of the services that we now contract to the county and applying them on a regional basis for the Antelope Valley. Section 8 housing would be one of them. The Housing Authority is what we're talking about initially. And perhaps this election issue is something we ought to throw in the pot for discussion. But there's a lot of things we could do as the community of the Antelope Valley, I think a lot more effectively than they're being done now. The mayor of Palmdale is in agreement. We're now just trying to decide which ones of those things are best approached from a regional point of view. And so there will be some interesting and exciting changes coming up, and this might be one of those that we should add to it, for what it's worth. Whatever you want staff to do...
Maybe it would be appropriate to allow that interaction to take place first, and then come back, and we'll report on it. And if there's a potential, maybe there's some opportunity there. I still think that we need to take some kind of appropriate action on it. I feel that, and again, I don't, we, again, I fully believe that handing something to the county is not the way to go.
Not quite suicide, but it's close. It's close.
If I could suggest, Mr. Mayor, a proper way to proceed from here is that I agree with both of you, that we can give Mr. Bozigian direction to come back, to look at what an initiative would look like on the ballot. We can start discussing it to make sure that it's done properly, but I don't think it takes a vote tonight, as long as there's no objection. That's a consensus of the council, and Mr. Bozigian has his direction.
You two are going to agree on that? Okay, good. Just let's go forward. One correction. Yes. You said the only county that does well is the Sheriff's Department. Yes. Don't miss our brethren at the Fire Department. Oh, yes, that's true. That's true. And we have more tonight on that.
I want to make sure that I add that we want to give our nod to the, I don't want the Sheriff's Department or Fire Department to think that I was whipping on them tonight. They don't fit in that group, so...
You know, I don't know if you folks know this, but I tend to overstate things. I'm sure you haven't noticed it, but I do. There are some things the county does terribly. There are some things they do very well. Things they do terribly, we need to remove. You know, the District Attorney's Office, I think they do very well. And I, you know, I make these broad, sweeping statements, and I forget that I'm offending people I shouldn't be offending. But there are a lot of things the county does. Instead of for us, they're doing it to us, and we need to do something about that. And that's really all I meant to convey with that. Okay, we go to this? Okay. Mayor Hearn's requested that I put the Violence-Free Zone report on the agenda, but it's actually Mayor Hearn's presentation, and we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you. And a side note or sidebar, if I please, is to tell you that we commend you for all the good things you guys are doing, and I'm talking to all five of you. And even with your differences, you make good decisions, and we appreciate that, and we'll continue to pray in that area. So I know that's a side note. Mr. Mayor, and to the council and to all our staff, the reason why we brought this to you tonight, in the City of Palmdale and the Pete Knight High School, they've already made that decision. The City of Palmdale have offered up money, and of course, you have, too. I think it's $75,000 that has been offered up by our city. But there are matching funds required, and these matching funds, so tonight, we got two things in mind when we make the presentation to you. One is that bring you up a data of the good things that has happened to Eastside High School and the principal and all those people here to let you know that. So that's part one. Part two is, is that what we hope we can do is that somebody who will hear this, or read this, or hear about it, will step up to the plate and say, "Yep, we'd like to offer up some money to help the City of Lancaster to make sure that the Eastside School get at least one more year." And so with that in mind, I really appreciate, again, coming back before you. And just remember, Mr. Mayor, things that we talked about on the side, I'm really up for any five of you, that if I can help in any way, I'm ready to do it. And thank you for letting us be before you. I'm going to have Mr. Morell to carve the rest of the tea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morell, we have been missing you on the walk.
I saw you the other day. I was on the test court. I watched you when you were by.
Okay.
I would really would like for Brett and Eric to speak first, and then I could kind of close out after one of our supervisors in the Violence-Free Zone gives a few data that I think would be good for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to take a couple minutes to share with you. My name is Brett Nail. I'm the Director of School Improvement with the Antelope Valley Union High School District. And just wanted to share with you a little bit, last December, the Antelope Valley High School District, along with the cities of Lancaster and Palmdale, partnershiped to bring to our valley the Center for Neighborhood Enterprise that is based in Washington, D.C., a nonprofit organization, to establish Violence-Free Zones on two of our campuses, Pete Knight High School in Palmdale and Eastside High School here in Lancaster. And I wanted to share with you a lot of the positive things that have been happening. We notice in our realm, the realm of education, that things have changed over the decades. I'm a valley member, grown up here, went to Ivy High School, graduated in 1979, been a teacher and administrator for the last 19 years in our district, and we see things change. A lot of things that we cannot necessarily handle within the education realm, and look for community members to come in and assist us. And that's what the Violence-Free Zones do. They look at community members, members within our community, who know what it's like to ride that fence, maybe, of doing well or being drugged to a different area, and come in with, change lives and work as youth advisors with our high school students. Each high school has identified roughly 100 to 125 students that we feel if we were able to have a youth advisor in their life, could change their life around to the positive and become an active member within the community and within our campuses. And we've seen, in just the last few months, some tremendous growth in areas of a decline of violence on our campuses, a decline of disrespect, an increase in our GPA, grade point averages, and an increase in our attendance. And as of yet, as Mr. Morell has spoken, we have yet to be able to contract with CNE for our Violence-Free Zone on Eastside High School because of the funding issues. But we're working on that. We're working with a number of prominent valley residents who have some long ties with our community to look at being able to raise additional dollars. Our goal is to not bring these programs on our campuses semester at a time, but look at year, multiple-year opportunities for keeping them on our campus to show that these community members, these kids, young kids, actually, they're young to me, 20, 23, 24-year-old people that come back onto our campuses to share with these kids some life experiences that allow them to see a future for themselves, not only what's happening tomorrow, the next day, but to look at three, four, five years down the road, and maybe for the first time, have somebody encourage them to go on to college, to do something back for their community. So we want to be able to just to share with you where we're at. Again, we feel that has done some great things. We're a little concerned that we have yet been able to contract with... some great things. We're a little concerned that we have yet been able to contract with the Center for Neighborhood Enterprise for our Lancaster site, but we are confident that we'll be able to with the city's help to do that and bring that program back onto Eastside. So thank you very much for letting me address you.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Eric Riordan. I'm principal of Eastside High School. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned earlier that you sometimes overstate things, which I do at times as well, but your statement rang loud and clear with the people of, in the community of Eastside High School when this council decided to support the Violence-Free Zone for another year. We want to thank you for that. It makes a big difference for our school. What it allows me to do as principal is be proactive as, as opposed to being reactive when, when things are about to happen, or when things do happen, either on my campus or in the community. A lot of times those things are linked. And, and so this group of fine young men and women come on our campus and they mentor our students. They create relationships with them so that we're able to find out what's going to happen before it does. And that's vital. A lot of times, when you look at instances that happen around the country that deal with violence, there were signals out there that the adults missed, which we tend to do. But with Violence-Free Zone, we have a better chance of catching those things before it happens. So, I want to thank you for having this program at our school. Again, we're working on the funding, but again, this, this city deserves some thanks for, for stepping up when they see something that's worthy and supporting that. So, we have some stats and some things we'd like to talk about, that Tavon is going to come up and bring to your attention. Fights are down since February of, of last year, and they're going to continue to improve if we can keep this program at our school. So with that, I think we have, your line?
My name is Tavon Davis. I'm the site supervisor for the Eastside Violence-Free Zone. And once again, we all want to thank you for allowing us to come here today and speak with you. I'm just going to share a few stats with you, and please keep in mind that the stats that I'm sharing are a comparison from the first semester when we were not on campus, to the second semester when we arrived on campus. We had a fifty-four percent decrease in classroom disturbances, thirty-eight percent less fights, twenty-seven percent less discipline entries total, and ninety-seven percent of our students graduated to the next level. These are students that we call the ten percent, the students that somehow fall through the cracks, the students that aren't motivated to be successful in life. And through us mentoring these students, we have given them hope. We've given them an opportunity to see the same thing and the same message that our principal gives. So once again, thank you very much. My name is Tavon Davis, the site supervisor of Eastside Violence-Free Zone.
But wait, before you, before you sit down, how do you get the stats? Where do they come from?
From SASE. SASE is, of course, the, the school district uses to keep track of all the fights and all the discipline entries.
So this is a district-generated report?
Yes, this is from SASE, from the report.
Is it? Okay. How does it, how does it compare to the other schools?
How does it compare to the other schools?
Yes. I mean, is it, are we seeing similar decreases that don't have the program?
No, no, sir. I don't believe so.
Okay. Can somebody, can somebody give me a comparison?
Between the?
Between the, the schools that have the program and the schools that don't? I mean, not tonight.
If you don't mind, I, and just real briefly, yes, we do see the decreases happening at Pete Knight High School and Eastside as compared to the other schools on our district. You know, all of our schools are growing, and even with an increase in students at Eastside specifically, we're seeing that decrease in the amount of fights.
I'd, I'd like to see the, the actual comparisons, and if you could do it graphically, that would assist me.
Happy to.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, we want to thank everyone, all the city council, as well as the rest of the, the city council members that are here. When, when the city council made a decision, not city council, Antelope Valley Union School District, and the city of Palmdale, and eventually also the city of Lancaster, to address what was obviously going to be a concern in the future in terms of our schools and our communities, when they went to CNE, they weren't just going for the school. They were going to bring an element into the community that would lend itself to upbringing those young men who, if they don't graduate, they become the same people that you spoke about in the article that was written in the paper the other day about the car that was going around through the police department, the burglary car that was going to be used. It's a, it's a given that any young man or young lady that doesn't graduate, their options become very, very narrow. One of the things that CNE wanted to provide was an opportunity for us to deal with that ten percent, as Tavon spoke about, that really make it difficult for the other ninety percent to latch on to education as a, as a necessity for future growth. For us, it was an opportunity to try to knock off the numbers of youngsters that are going into the camps and into YA. We find that just by giving them the educational opportunity, it'll happen very quickly. For me, who haven't worked in the private sector since nineteen sixty-five, whilst revoked, it was during that time, I made a total commitment that I would just spend, at that time though, I made a commitment to burn the country down. That was in the sixties. And, and, and over the years-
We're not supposed to talk about those things.
I know, I know, I know, but I, I'm grateful, I'm grateful to, to my bishop, because among other things, what took place besides spiritual awakening and a, and a recognition that I could be a contributing partner in the communities in which I lived, I had the opportunity to, to come through the CNE program, work at Glocka, work at all the boys' clubs. I've only done this all my life. When I was asked by the city of Palmdale to come with them to DC to see this program in operation, we were talking about schools that you see on TV shows and in movies, violent, violent schools at one time, schools with not the diversity of population that we have here in the Antelope Valley. For myself, I was awakened only by the fact that we had this bold group of individuals in two bold municipalities, I'm speaking about Lancaster and Palmdale, who would do something that was so unique, so unprecedented for the West Coast. I was loving the opportunity to be the one to recruit and assemble this group of individuals that would walk into the lives of these young men and women. In some ways, my own naivety shows. In some ways, even at this late date in my life, there is still an innocence. And it took me a while to comprehend, and them, that they couldn't do a job so great and get such reward and find themselves so pleased with what they were able to do in the lives of these young men and women, it was inconceivable to them that it wasn't continuing on. They could not, I could not prepare them for the possibility that we would not be there another semester, that we wouldn't be a permanent feature of the schools in this, in this community. And when I watched this, who, who poured out their lives into these youngsters, they, they were shocked, and it, it manifested itself in tears and hurt and a new awareness of what it's really like to be in a community that sometimes has to answer to the whims of reality. And some of them, of course, are what we're dealing with with our budget, what we're dealing with with our economy, what we're dealing with in terms of the changes of the dynamics of both municipalities. I can recognize it, but I think I'm almost seventy. I had to recognize at some point in time that there are other factors that come in. But for the youngsters and the young men and women that were brought in to be youth advisors, they never even gave that a thought. All they knew is, if they walked into the lives of these young men and women, if they changed their attitude toward education, if they made them responsible for the schools they went to, we would see great change. That's exactly what happened. So to come back to them and say, and at the school that we, to be quite frankly, from day one, Eastside was on board. Eastside, every facet of Eastside was on board. The security, the administration, the teachers, the counselors, they all came as a unit to embrace this here program, and they saw the, I mean, the results were astonishing to those that didn't know better. For me, who came out of those same streets, I was not surprised at all. But what hurts is I have, and many of the youth advisors, those that are here, if you don't mind, could you stand? And that's not everyone. They, they, they just jumped on. They didn't get paid a lot of money, and it must be mentioned that of all, I was the least paid, but it was never about money in the first place. It was about having this grand opportunity and a community that I have embraced. And when I say a community, I'm talking about Palmdale and Lancaster. I'm, I'm a product of both, and I adore both. I don't know anything and will not allow myself to talk about this cactus curtain thing that I've heard for twenty years since I've been here. I see nothing but wonderful people on both sides, and been blessed by the opportunity to be mentored and spiritually enriched by your former mayor and my bishop, Bishop Hearn's. But I've also seen these youngsters with all this vitality and energy and love, which is probably the most important element in them changing these lives. When they were told the other day when we met, that there was a possibility that we would not be on campus on Eastside, I could only tell you, in all of my, again, I talk about my own naivety and innocence, they were devastated. I couldn't cope with what it was that I saw, and they couldn't comprehend why. Why would the community, the schools, not want them back, plead for them to be back? Well, we got that kind of response from the administration, from the school, and from the supervisors, and from the students. We purposely kept students from coming here en masse. It wasn't about that. It wasn't about swaying anyone with emotional appeals. It was about what Tavon showed you. Given the opportunity, we'll never revisit this issue again as it relates to finances. We have grants in the place. We have financial guarantees that will take place midway through the semester. We should never have to come before the city council to deal with an education issue as it relates to finances. I'm convinced if we could get a real, we only did all this in less than four months. This is our chance to start at the onset of the, of the semester, and by the end of the semester, you will be astonished, you will be amazed, and more importantly, the, the, the police, which weren't called at all during the four and a half months we were at Eastside, the, the truancies, the attendance, which translates also into money through average daily attendance, all of those changed. I am as convinced of anything I've ever done, and this is all I've ever done, this is the most important project and movement I've ever been involved in. I would ask that you do, and I know you've given up for seventy-five thousand dollars, a huge amount of money for a community wrestling with what's going on in the state. We recognize that. I have the audacity to say, double it. Don't let us, we've already raised some money. We're not only asking you to put in what you wanted us to match, you match it. And what a heck of a thing to ask of you. I wouldn't ask it if it wasn't going to be totally worth your while. Allow us to go on Eastside and Pete Knight at the same time and continue what we started, and you will never, ever regret it. And I won't come here asking for money again. It'll, it'll take care of itself. That we do know. And I can't thank you enough, and I, I don't know how the cards work. I have youngsters that might want to say something that's outside of me. But thank you for the opportunity, and thank you, Bishop, for giving us the opportunity to come before this city council. And you, Mayor Edford. Mr. Mayor, again, I won't take any more time, other than just to thank you, and Mr. Cilio and Mr. Smith, who were on with me when I brought this to assistant acting city manager at the time, and the council stepped right up. There was a hundred percent support of, of all that was to be done, and I'm just excited as I can be to let you know that our streets are much better, and the workload on our sheriff's department is going to be a lot less if we got people who are up to standard. So again, thank you so very much for allowing us to be before you and giving us adequate time to talk about it.
Henry, before you, before you sit down.
Sure.
You know, the, the passion you guys have for this is, is palpable and impressive. The, the problem is, is you know, this is a new council, and, and I'm ignorant, more ignorant than I should be, of exactly what's going on here. But if the stats are as impressive as, as indicated, I, I guess I'm beating around the bush of saying what I'd like to do. Diana, I would like Diana to investigate this and, and then report to me just a full, complete of everything that's going on in regards to this.
Excellent.
And then I'd like to put it back on the table.
Excellent.
I am, you know, what little I know about it, I'm concerned about the district not partnering with us on it. Because my, my philosophy on, on things are that in order to really have a huge impact on this community, all of us have got to start partnering up and doing it together. That doesn't mean if one side backs out, that the other side picks it up. Now, and I don't understand why there isn't more participation if the, if the numbers are supporting what you say. You know, it, it, it really isn't evidence-based analysis. Now, we can, we can go ahead and spend the next hour on this, but you'll be talking to somebody who doesn't have enough information. And Sherry, are you in agreement with me on this? And so Diana, are you, Diana Bred Williams, I'd like you to, to undertake this task.
Yeah, I would be happy to. I was sitting here listening, but one of the things that I was thinking is-
Why don't you come on up so it's on the record? And, and Emmett, is this, is this working for you? This, okay.
No, one of the things I had filled out this card, I wanted, I was going to say is that not only should we be looking for money for this program because it's exemplary, but also-
Well, wait a minute. I thought you were going to give me an unbiased report.
No, no, no.
You haven't investigated yet.
I'm going to give you unbiased. You know I will. But one of the things I was also thinking is that I would like to be able to talk to the city manager and some of the staff, because maybe there are other ways that we could help them in terms of grantsmanship and looking for funds beyond this valley, so that it's not just a matter of going to the people within this environment, but there may be pockets of money out there that I'm sure they know about, but they also may not know about. So there's a whole lot we can do in terms of giving you a report of possibilities.
What I'd like to do is move it to the next meeting, and, I mean, if this is working, I, I'm going to be your biggest fan. But I need to know it's working. All right?
Mr. Smith, please, if you need me to sit down with you, I know the program very well, and I'd be happy to give you a personal briefing on it as well.
All right.
I'm just going to mention the fact that we really need to expedite it as fast as possible because school has already started.
I, I can put it, I can put it on the next meeting.
Okay.
And we can make a decision, and I can also, you know, call the players that may be opposed and see what's going on. But what I, what I'm saying is, we can spend the next hour.
I understand.
But I don't have enough foundation to, to make a meaningful response to any request you might have.
I understand.
Fair enough. Is, is that okay with you folks that came to talk, that we do it next?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so Diana, in the next ten days, let's get together, tell me what's going on. Thank you.
I've got a couple of comments. One is, first to the youth advisors, I know that you guys are on the leading edge of this effort. You guys give of yourselves personally and get involved with kids who are in very difficult circumstances, and you guys are on the leading edge and making a difference, and for that, you guys are my heroes. The ten percent you're dealing with are sometimes tough nuts to crack. Couple of things that I didn't hear answered tonight that I would like to hear. One is, I know Palmdale has some private sources for matching funds, and I'm, I don't know how it came out that Palmdale got private sources for that, and that didn't happen on our side. I don't know, I'm not trying to assign blame there. I just don't want to see that happen again. I think we should be working together on this. Number two, if, if the numbers are accurate, and I believe they are, I think Mayor Parrish, you're going to be somewhat astounded at the results of this program. I can't figure out how the high school district doesn't see that the money they put in comes back in spades, if nothing else, just in attendance dollars. I think it's just flat, an investment that more than pays for itself. And I'd love to see someone looking at those numbers as well.
If I'm, thank you, Mr. Cilio. If, if I'm understanding properly, that the, the school board is going to take some more looks at this right away.
I certainly hope so.
And I, and I've been talking to, to the school board members and saying, hey, we got to do this at least one more shot. But again, I can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. Okay, moving on. Good enough? Okay. I guess it's my meeting this week, isn't it? All right. We have the Architectural and Design Planning Commission. Everybody who's on that commission, would you stand, please, who's here? I know Darren is at another meeting. I'm at a loss, Rick. What are we doing here? Let's take a break. Okay? Take ten minutes. No order now, you know? (inaudible) now, you know? You know, I can see that you guys don't spend a lot of time in court. Okay. The Architectural and Design Planning Commission. That's our next item, and everybody knows the names of the people that we're appointing. Before we start, Mr. Cook, did you have something you wanted to talk to us about?
Mayor, city council, thank you, Mr. Parrish, for asking me to be on that, of the, excuse me, the Architectural Design Committee. At this point in time, with the new hospital being built in Palmdale, I'm going to ask that my name be removed from the appointment. I would also like to ask that if you'd be considerate to consider my wife, who's part of this community, been part of this community since 1955, to replace my name on that agenda.
I will absolutely do that. Quite honestly, I've always thought she was the better half.
Thank you.
But thank you. So, Mrs. Cook, are you up for this?
Yes, sir.
All right. So what we're going to have to do is put you on the agenda for two weeks from now, because they, you know, this Brown Act thing just, you know, anyway. Drives me crazy. The, you know, the Architectural Design Planning Commission, it's a full-blown commission, and it's going to change the way this city looks. This last 100 days as mayor, I've kind of recognized that, you know, there's a lot of things we do to get us back to zero, meaning draining the swamp, getting rid of the Section 8 problems, getting rid of the crime, doing all of these things that bring us back to zero. But, you know, getting to zero doesn't make anybody happy. It just gives us a place to start. And what we too often forget is the things that can really improve the quality of our lives in a very positive, uplifting way. And I think how our community looks is key to that, and that's why I'm really excited about this commission. They're going to have an enormous amount of authority in how buildings are built, the design that is approved, and how we look as a community. The day of every big box store coming up and putting up a box and calling it improvement of the community is over. Sorry, Dave. The changes are going to be demonstrable, and they're going to be quick. And so with that, I would nominate Sean Donlan, Randy Hall, Cassandra Harvey, Darren Parker, Courtney Stallworth, and Timothy Wiley. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any public comment? Am I doing it right?
It's no speaker cards.
No speaker cards, no communications? Okay. Want to vote? And it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, your commissioners. I've requested Darren Parker to hold, to notify everybody of the first meeting, and I guess that we have to, is Darren here?
The first meeting of the commission needs to be called as a special meeting under the Brown Act, and that can be done by the chairman with a notice, 24 hours' notice to each of the members, written notice to each of the members.
Okay, and so Darren's the acting chairman until they meet and vote on a chairman?
Then they can select their permanent chairman.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Mayor, since it will need staff support, I'd like to ask that Mr. Parker work with Mr. Ludiki.
Yes, I will advise him to do that. And Mr. Ludiki, you know, for 20 years, I've heard you talk about what we should be doing in regards to design. This is your opportunity. We're looking for great things. Thank you. The next item for discussion is the appointment of Gene Gainer. Mr. Gainer, are you here? We've requested that, or I've requested that Gene Gainer be the city's appointment to the prison advisory, what do we call that?
The prison citizen advisory.
The prison citizen advisory committee. And the reason I've asked Mr. Gainer to do that is, is we're going to get much more involved with the prison and the prison staff in the next couple of years. The warden, I'm incredibly impressed with, I'm incredibly impressed with the assistant warden, and we're going to start dealing with the prison as the asset it really can be. They were the ones that brought it to the vice mayor and my attention, that, you know, the disaster preparedness of this community is terribly deficient. There really isn't a centralized authority that is going to really take charge. It's still piecemealed. And I understand the city manager disagrees with me a little bit on that.
Only that there's component, I know, I agree with you. I've been saying for a long time that I do believe there's components of it, but I want to rest assured that the public, that the sheriff's department, who is regional, and in particular the fire department, who's the best in the entire world at what they do, will be there and trained for this. But I agree with your assessment on schools, hospitals, cities could get much, much more coordinated effort.
And, you know, the reality is, if we have an 8.0 earthquake, which we will have, we're going to have 75,000 to 100,000 children without parental supervision, depending on what time it happens. What does that really mean? That means that we better be prepared to see dead children, unless we do something now. And so we're meeting with the fire department, we're meeting with Palmdale. Mayor Letford has been incredibly supportive of the idea that we have a regional disaster preparedness that is much more inclusive and vibrant than it is today. And interestingly enough, that came from the discussions with the prison staff. Another thing that came out of that discussion, Sheriff Baca is the one who got the meeting going, and he came up for the meeting, is this thing with the prisoners being released into the community. We have an enormous number of prisoners just released into Lancaster, because that's where the prison is, and are expected to return to their home counties on their own efforts. The reality is, is that oftentimes doesn't happen. As a result of that citizen advisory commission meeting, the sheriff is now working with the prison to pick these people up at the prison gate and take them back to their county. I mean, think of the impact that's going to have on the crime in this community. They're not going to get the chance to engage in whatever they engage in. The work that we're expecting you to do, Mr. Gainer, with this, with the prison, is vital and needs to be constant and ongoing. Another thing that came out of that meeting that Captain Anderson worked on, just responded to really quickly, was getting the gang intelligence people, with the prison gang intelligence people together, in a meaningful exchange of information that's real time, meaning the moment the prison or the sheriff's department has information that should be shared, it's going to be shared immediately, which results in the suppression of a lot of bad things from happening. Because we're, up until now, it's been, you know, things are ordered out of the prison, and then the coroner's truck is called up, and then the investigation begins. Now we're able to get on top of it before anybody dies, which is truly phenomenal. And so do I need to do a motion to do this, or?
Yes.
Let me make the motion, then I'll ask for the public comment, okay? As to Mr. Gainer being the appointee from the city to the citizen advisory commission. I'll make the motion. Do you have a second? Okay, and Mr. Burns, did you want to?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment is that, you know, you all have appointed me to be the support for our seniors of the area. I had a meeting with them, and in September, I told them I would do my very best to see if I could get my mayor, or vice mayor, or one of the city council members, and our city manager to meet with them at the senior center. That's part one. Part two is, I want to get a date set to where we can invite all of the seniors to like, a room like the EOC, so that they can hear and understand exactly where we are in terms of supporting them in that area. So if I can do that, we'd really appreciate that, if you can make that meeting at the senior center.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one speaker card for Mr. Banks. I've missed you. How have you been?
Oh, good, good. I know I haven't came, and, you know, a lot of different work, I do a lot of traveling. You know, it's interesting, you know, how God works. I was coming to give what I call the three minutes of fame, to explain, you know, on the CAC. I've been at the prison for 15 years. One of the things that I've been in conversation with Mr. Jeffrey, and it's interesting that you talked about the preparedness plan, and, you know, this is one of the first things that he came in and he asked him. Well, I hate to talk about people that really don't understand the system. I've been in it 25 years at San Quentin. I wrote the scenarios for the preparedness plans that we worked with Marin County. Every prison has it. Every year, they practice it and they plan it, and it's whatever the scenario is that they have to do. And so that's just to give some understanding that this is not something that they don't do. It's a program that's viable, and it comes from the top to the bottom. But the reason I'm here is, the governor, as you know, has put some cuts that is affecting public safety. I went to the warden. I don't get too involved, it's not a union issue with me, it's more political. If I have a problem, I'm going to call the governor's office, I'm going to call Aaron, I'm going to call the press secretary, and I'm going to voice my opinion. And so because of that, you have staff that was 6:55, they understand the safety. The reason that I brought it to, you know, you have the CAC, which really needs to be more involved. I've always said, and any administration know that when your council will come, I always talk about being more than just a hearer, but be a doer. You can hear it, but you should be able to have some response. I've talked to the governor's office, and they told me to talk to the assemblies. So I've contacted George Runner's office and Sharon's office. Now I'm coming to you as this local. The union's not a union issue, it's a people issue, it's a public safety issue. I had a short meeting with the warden, and I asked him, did he know the threshold of what do you consider a safe environment for staff with inmates when you're trying to save money? He said, I don't know. What is the number to know that it is a safe environment for the public? I don't know. If I get the answer, please tell me. And so we have to wait to see what the governor's office is going to do with the Department of Corrections. There's 33 prisons, and we're number 32. I don't care about the other 33. I came to this prison to represent California, Pete Wilson, and the director's office. And I've always, whenever I have to do and say, I'll do. It's unsafe, they need to look at the staffing, and so it's just for you to know, if something happens, and there's a lawsuit that goes, everybody's going to be notified, and everybody's going to be talked about. But remember that the people want, the people wanted a reception center. In the results of the reception center, we have buildings that have 40-something inmates on the daydream floor. Whenever the staffing issue came, hopefully they'll change. Come, if you have one officer on the floor, that's unheard of. So I've notified the state, I've notified the local representative, and now I'm coming to you. You know, the CAC, that's, I mean, Gainer can ask, because a lot of times, you need to know the questions to ask to get the right answer.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Any more? Okay. And, you know, and on a side note, you know, we had an election that was rather contested. I don't know if anybody noticed, it was kind of heated at times. But when it was over, there were a group of candidates, and Mr. Gainer was one of the people who ran against me, who came forward, and David Paul was one of them, that, you know, let, put it behind us and do whatever they can for the city, and for the two of you and the others, and Mr. Banks is also one of those. How much we appreciate that, and how vital it is that you are involved in what we're doing in the city. And thank you, Mr. Gainer. Can we vote? Any discussion? Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Do you have all the certifications?
No, I want to do it at their first meeting. The vice mayor was asking when we're going to swear on the commissioners, and I'm going to swear them in at their first meeting, so we have everybody together. That's the plan, just so you know. Now the Criminal Justice Commission. Greg Augusta still here?
He had to leave.
He had to leave? Gee, I should have done this agenda different. We got Marvin Christus here. Dr. Brown here?
He gave his grits. He was not able to make it. He had to work commitment.
Well, let me just give the names. Marvin Christus here, Mr. Greer's here, and everybody else isn't here. You've let me down already, Marvin. What is this?
(inaudible).
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I didn't hear the other five.
That's not quite true. You were in the meeting. We had a press conference today announcing the Criminal Justice Commission. The Criminal Justice Commission is unique in a lot of respects. The first way it's unique is that it was at the request of the sheriff. And he made it really clear that he wanted a commission, that he wanted to give a lot of authority to, and a lot of input, that he expected a lot of input from, to the sheriff's department as to how this community is policed. That really is unheard of, for a sheriff to share his authority in that way. I'm just not aware of anyone else doing it. It was amusing when he came up with the idea, because Axel Anderson, you know, almost passed out. Carl Dealey started dancing like he, you know, was nervous for some reason or another. And it really is true, it was a remarkable scene to watch, that the sheriff was insisting on this. And they responded, and they came in with the city manager and a group of other folks, Marvin Christ, who was president of the sheriff's boosters, had formed a commission that had unique qualifications. They all had to be people that had accomplished things in their own life and had a proven ability to accomplish things. They, we needed people that could reach into the community, that had a far reach, so that they could make changes quickly and get the community involvement in the crime suppression quickly. And who you all put together, I'm just really impressed with, and they told the mayor to stay out of it, so. So I did. And it's a fascinating group, and let me tell you a little bit about them. Greg Augusta does work for me, but he was the number three man in the California Highway Patrol, and he was the person, along with my brother Rob Parrish, who were responsible for getting the Highway Patrol Task Force on gangs that teamed up with the sheriff's department the day after my election. As much as I'd like to have taken the credit for that, it was really the two of them that made that happen with the commissioner, with the Highway Patrol. And that is in itself an historic and revolutionary concept, where we have Highway Patrol TOs driving with sheriff deputies, both for the purpose of suppressing gangs. We were the first community to do it. We're doing it valleywide, and it's having a significant impact. They also brought in Mark Brown. Mark Brown is the, one of the doctors in the emergency room, but he's also a Harvard Law School graduate and a Dartmouth Medical School graduate. He's an incredibly, incredibly bright man. And he also taught me evidence in law school. He didn't do a very good job in regards to teaching me, but the rest of the students behaved quite well. And the reason it's so essential that we have the hospital and the medical community involved in this crime suppression is because it overlaps. Just, you know, a small example of it is, the amount of the deputies' time that is spent at the emergency room. We have, up until recently, have had deputies there an entire shift, waiting to book somebody. The doctors have to clear the person to book them. And, you know, some days you drive over there, and you see nothing but fire department and sheriff department vehicles parked, waiting for something to happen. By bringing Dr. Brown into the equation, that we now have major input into getting those deputies back into the street. And we also have somebody who's going to have some remarkable ideas as to how to further this crime suppression. Brenda Cash is from the prison, she's the, you know, they got a different title for her, but she's essentially the assistant warden. She was the one that brought us together with this disaster preparedness. She has some incredible ideas. I'm really looking forward to working with her. We have Marvin Christ, who, you know, Marvin and I have been fighting for years with each other on various issues, but Marvin gets things done. He absolutely makes things happen when he sets out to do it. And he was our first choice to be on this commission, and you've done a great job bringing these people together. The amount of hours that have already gone into this as the result of Marvin's work is impressive. We have Dennis Greer from the real estate community, but more importantly, from the business community, because we recognize that if we're going to bring the crime rate down below Santa Clarita, the businesses have to get much more involved in that than they are. When we see problems with the businesses, we're going to be real vocal with that, and we're going to insist on them getting involved with hardening the targets, so that we can drop the larceny rate and things of that nature. We have Chris Johnson from, what is it, Grace Chapel? He's the pastor there. They have done some amazing things within the neighborhoods, and with their, I guess, what do they call this? Faith-based initiatives or? I mean, that's the concept, isn't it? Where government is working with, with churches. And we fully intend to, to expand that program with the city's help, and that's why he's on this crime commission. If, if we don't get the churches more involved in the, in the neighborhoods, I think that everything we're doing is going to have short-term results. And in order to have long-term results, we just have to recognize we have to assist them. And the city attorney is over there getting nervous, thinking, what is he gonna say next? We're gonna have the ACLU crawling down our throats. And that may happen, and I really don't care. What we're going to do is assist the churches in having an active presence in the neighborhoods like they've never have before. And that's why Chris Johnson's on this commission. And finally, we have David Vieira from the school district. We've already seen an amazing drop in crime because of the participation of the school districts and the sheriff's department working together. You know, we first had the truancy car and then we had the burglary suppression team. And at last count, they are arresting one and a half burglars a day, a day, and taking them off the streets. Burglary will soon be an insignificant problem in this community. And it was really because of partnering up with the different agencies and everybody attacking the problem together. So I'm excited about this Criminal Justice Commission and I guess I move to nominate those individuals. Can I do that now?
Mayor, they're gonna be presented to you at the next council meeting for formal appointment. This is the announcement.
Okay. Now, a lot of people applied for this commission. You can see how difficult it was to, to pick them. And also, you know, we, we tried to keep politics out of it. And I think we were successful. But each of these commissioners are going to have committees that will be taking on various tasks and various problems. And today at the press conference, I told them that this is something we're going to measure. If, if Part One crimes are not down below 300 per 10,000 people in 12 months, you will have failed in your task. If you get it below that, you will have been successful. And it really will become a model for the nation. I just don't have any doubt that they're gonna write books about what Captain Anderson and the community is doing in regards to this problem. It's quickly not going to be a problem. I, I, you know, a, a problem we do have is that there's this perception of crime in the community and then there's the crime in the community. And the two absolutely don't relate to each other. They're totally different. They're, they're absolute separate variables. And one of the things we have to do is let people know just how safe it is becoming. And towards that end, you know, you all know about my Walk With the Mayor program. I'm gonna start doing that on Wednesday nights in the parks and we'll move it. And come out and walk with me in the park at night and see just how safe it is. And we should have that up and running in the next couple of weeks. So, any discussion? Anything we need to do? Everybody good? Good. Thank you. Moving on. Oh, and thank you for, for doing this, Mr. Christ. Now, of course, you know, when they do this, we have to worry about them running against us because they're really gonna be the heroes of this community. Thought I'd let you all know that. Marvin? If, if you do it, I want you to run against us. This community deserves to be safe and we're entrusting you folks to do it. Thank you. Oh, and now we come to the one that everybody's here for. Well, some people are here for. And that's the discussion of the validity of Robert LaSalle's separation agreement. And again, that's me. The reason this is on the, the table for discussion, I had a conversation this, today with Gary Burgess. And what I told him is, is that this issue keeps coming up. You know, the law in this state is pretty clear that a city manager can have an 18-month separation agreement. And anything above that and beyond that is a violation of the law. That's how I read it. The city attorney and I have had numerous discussions about this and it comes down to how you define salary. And what I said in the paper is, is true. I think there was a soft shoe effort to get around that. And so what does that mean to us as a community and as citizens? It means $250,000 has gone out of the city general fund that I don't think should've. I don't think it was appropriate. I think that the legislature intended it not to happen. I think there was a, a lot of political forces in play at the time Mr. LaSalle left. It's really not a discussion as to whether or not LaSalle should've left or shouldn't have or what kind of job he was doing. It's a question of can we recover a quarter of a million dollars that if I could give that to Shelley on the neighborhood watch, we could have one of the most vibrant neighborhood watch programs in the country? Or we can give it to Mr. LaSalle? I think it's something worthy of discussion. And from that discussion, we'll then decide what we should do. I would like to hear from either the city attorney or the city manager as to just what we're paying this man who's now working for a county in Florida and what will we continue to pay him for? And if you could give us some...
Mr. Mayor, let me just go through the agreement and summarize what the various provisions are. And I do have a, a couple of numbers to go with those to, so you can see what the order of magnitude of, of various agreements are. The, yeah. The, the first term is that he's entitled to 18 months of base salary. And that's payable through December 31st of 2009. The, the dates, the 18 months of, of base salary start June 1st of this year and then go. There was a six-month notice period required under his contract, which was given, and then the separation term started. The, in addition to the base salary, there are other elements of salary that were included within the settlement agreement. And when I say other elements of salary, that's, you know, it's using a much broader definition than just what he gets in his paycheck every payday. We're using a lot of terms as they would be included for tax reasons and just for, for benefits as, as well. The, he's also, in addition to the base, 18 months of base salary, he was entitled to...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. What do you mean entitled to? Give me the terms.
Under the agreement.
Under the agreement.
Under the agreement. The agreement provides for payment. When I say entitled to, that's, I'm referring to the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
The, a contribution to his 401A account in the amount of 8.5% of base salary, the ICMA Vantage Care Retirement Health Savings Account in the amount of 5% of base salary, with an employer-paid contribution of 8.47% and a CalPERS contribution of 7%. The PARS part of the retirement package that was in existence at the time Mr. LaSalle was terminated provided for a minimum of five years employment with the city before you would be eligible to retire with those benefits. As everybody's aware, Mr. LaSalle was here for three years. The, part of the, the agreement was to amend the PARS eligibility to provide for vesting after two years. So the PARS eligibility, the ability to retire from, from the city and to obtain the PARS benefit was vested as of two years of service. With a deferred retirement, the other part of that was he had to retire from the city to be eligible for that. And so that was, there was a deferred retirement. I am told that those changes cost the city absolutely nothing. That was a no-cost modification. The next element was an auto allowance. Under his existing contract, he was provided with a car, the use of, of a employer-provided car for personal purposes results in income being attributed to your 40, or your 10, or W-2.
W-2.
Every year. And so we were treating that as salary as well. The, and it was $1,000 per month for $18,000 during the severance period. There was a provision for paying his attorney's fees for negotiating the contract, the settlement agreement, that was $12,000. Then during the severance period, he was eligible for group health, dental, and vision insurance for himself and his eligible family. He was also long-term and short-term disability insurance and the city would continue to pay the premium for life and accidental death and disability insurance in the face amount of his annual base salary. And in addition, the, each year on an annual basis, he was given $2,000 for additional life insurance. All of that goes away upon him obtaining employment by another public entity or obtaining other employment. So that...
So that stops today?
That stops whenever he's gainfully employed again. So, and that's some percentage of 40,000, you know, it's, if it was 40,000 for the severance period, then he's, you know, we're only a couple of months into that severance period, so it's roughly the majority of that amount would be, would stop. In addition to that, there were a number of various hours for administratively vacation time, sick leave, and floating holidays. There was a change in the policies of the city as part of this agreement that several of those items were use or lose within a calendar year. And that policy was changed to allow accumulation through the end of...
For him?
Just for, just, no, just for him. So there was an allowance of accumulating those, those hours through the end of the severance period and a right...
And he was the only employee in the city that that was done for?
Yes. And, and he also has the right to cash that out at any time. The, there was also a provision for a lump sum payment of $17,800 that was paid in January of '08 that covered professional dues and subscriptions necessary for his continuation and full participation in national, regional, state, and local associations such as ICMA, League of Cities, that type of thing, National League of Cities.
Wait a minute, what?
There was a lump sum payment. Under his original, under his employment contract, he was paid to attend various conferences and to be a member of various organizations on both a state, local, and national level. Those included the ICMA, International Conference of Management, International City Managers Association, and, and then also League of Cities and National League of Cities. And so rather than pay that on an ongoing basis, there was a compromise reached that made a lump sum payment of $17,800.
So how do we know if we used that for those purposes?
We don't.
It was a scam to give him $17,000?
That's your characterization.
But what else is it?
It was a provision in the agreement to pay him $17,800.
Okay.
To cash out what, an, an element that was part of his employment contract. The, the next item was a lump sum contribution to the Retirement Health Services Account under, for ICMA. Again, a benefit that he had under his existing contract that was cashed out, that's $43,000. It's now sitting in a separate account at ICMA for him and it passed the requirements of the Internal Revenue Service for that. And that, that is in, in total, the, the various benefits provided under the, the agreement.
How much over 18 months? If you took, if you gave him a severance for 18 months of salary, how much more did he get?
I'm sorry, say that to you?
If you were to take his salary...
Right.
Give him 18 months severance, how much more did he get than that 18 months?
Than if you took his base salary?
Yes.
See, we're, we're getting back to the definition of what is salary. But the, I don't know if I can calculate that quickly. Let me, let me see. If you just took base salary for the, for the, the notice period, six months, plus the, each of the, the 12-month period, then there was an adjustment in it for the final six months, it would be... About 500,000 would be his base, base salary.
And what was the total payout?
If you subtract, if you, if you subtract out the, the six-month notice, then it's down to 380-some thousand dollars is the base salary. The total payout, when you add in all of the various insurance benefits, which, insurance benefits are allowable under the, under that code section.
If it's allowable, I don't wanna consider it.
Yeah, I think the final number that we, we came up with was 995. So subtract out 500,000, out of that, it'd be 4, 400-plus thousand.
Almost a half a million dollars.
About 400,000, because you gotta add, subtract out the insurance benefits as well. Yeah, about 400,000.
I just wanna...
Let me reiterate that that's, that's just rough eyeballing the, the list. You know, we can get more accurate with, you know, some computer time and calculators.
You know, I guess what I wanna know is I wanna know from the council, do we wanna just say that this is too painful to deal with and go on? Or personally, you know, I, I have trouble sitting up here, making decisions that are a result in young people spending the rest of their life in prison. Because that, that really is what happens when we increase the sheriff's budget and we go after these kids that, that are really young kids making bad decisions for, for, you know, sometimes $50 crimes, you know? And, and, and I just have trouble dealing with the hypocrisy of sitting up here and saying that this is okay. I don't think it is. I think that, that it's, it's wrong, but maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it is okay. So rather than hide from it and act like it didn't happen, I thought I would put it out here, let's hear what the people have to say about it. And then I want an assessment as to what is the, the potential cost of rectifying this if it needs to be rectified? What is the potential for success? It seems to me that there isn't any factual dispute about this. There's no reason for depositions, there's no reason for interrogatories, it's just laying it out in front of a judge and moving for summary judgment on a declaratory relief. But, you know, I'm the mayor up here, I'm not the lawyer, and that would be for you to tell us. But to me, this is just wrong. Now, do you wanna talk about it as a council first or do you wanna have the citizens talk first?
I would just like to clarify what it is you're asking. Are you asking that this be litigated or what you're, I'm not clear as to what you're after.
I think that we're stewards of the city's money. And what, what my understanding of what occurred with the previous council was that in, in an effort to deal with the, the political backlash, this decision was made to violate the law. And the law, I remember when that law was passed, Jim Gilli was the, was the city manager. And he had to, had to undo his contract because evergreen contracts, which really are poison pill contracts, I mean, they even frame it in a way that makes it more tolerable for us to, to accept, that if you wanna fire a city manager or another executive of a public agency, the maximum amount they're entitled to is 18 months of their salary. In this case, we gave this guy a half a billion more. I don't think we had the authority to do that. And Mayor Hearns, I'm sorry that you're in the room, but I don't believe that the council had the authority to do that. I think that it, it is just wrong. And can we fix it? Should we fix it? Or would everybody rather we just, you know, bandage the wound and act like it didn't happen and go about our way? I'd just like to hear what you all wanna do. But we could solve a lot of crimes with this man. But we could solve a lot of crimes with this, Mayor. There isn't any doubt about that. There's just a tremendous amount of things we could do with a half a million dollars. So what do you want to do? You want to open up to discussion first, and then we'll deal with it? Okay. Patricia Fo, you're first.
That's L F A U X.
Okay. Darlene, I bet you have something to say about this, don't you?
(inaudible) I'm one of the people who's not afraid of you, in case you haven't noticed.
I didn't know that anyone was. I didn't know that anyone was, and I certainly don't see any reason for it.
Maybe no one is, I hope not. Mayor Paris, you are seeking to void the contract between Bob LaSalle and the City of Lancaster. We had legal counsel when the contract was drawn up. Why didn't he catch the error you allege? I find it ironic that you are professing to understand that contract. Just recently, you couldn't understand and therefore violated the Brown Act, which incidentally most laymen understood. Obviously, you are looking for a loophole, this time to venture, pent-up venom towards Mr. LaSalle. What a golden opportunity for you to get revenge and the attention you desperately crave.
I thought he was fired. Why is it that you possibly think I need revenge from this?
No, this is my three minutes. Please don't ruin it. This is how the case comes off to me and probably other people. Imagine this scenario for possibility to show what you're made of. Void LaSalle's contract, bring him back as city manager, break the current city manager's contract, and start over from square one. Mayor Paris, you could become a big star in your own right in LaSalle's departure in Act Two. Create a three-ring circus that will become the best show around. I can picture you now as ringmaster, cracking the whip as you polish some arrogant bullying skills. When the spotlight seeks you out, you'll bring the house down. Summon your usual council member-
Darlene, you're so nasty to me. How come?
Well, you ain't seen nothing yet. Summon your usual council member sidekicks to join the show in rings two and three. If your glimmer of courage holds up, enter the lion's cage. However, let Ron Smith go in first. This could be his payback for helping to botch LaSalle's contract that you now want to void. The third council member could lock the cage door after you're all in. If you survive the lion's cage performance, you will no doubt be billed as a Three Stooges act, so take your bowels together. To sum it up, this farce is nonsense and generated for attention. This grandstanding stunt should be rated, like any other showbiz, cheap, sideshow attraction. As they say in showbiz, "Break a leg."
Don't go anywhere, I want to ask you something.
I'm not going to answer. I'm taking the fifth. What?
What I want to know from you is, do we give him the $500,000?
Absolutely. You know, putting up at that last council, he earned that and more after the harassment they gave him, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Paris.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor Smith and council staff. I have no prepared speech, but Mayor Paris, I thought you were tired of the news, being in the news all the time.
I'm in the news every day. If you honestly think that this is to generate publicity, you're not reading the paper. I have all the publicity I could possibly handle. This is about whether or not I let somebody take $500,000 he did not earn. And let's keep it on that issue. If I'm wrong about the law, somebody tell me that I'm wrong about the law and why. If I'm right about the law, let's just look at it in that regard. Now, I don't care if people love LaSalle or hate LaSalle. You know, if we want to unwind it and bring him back, bring him back. You know, I'm not going to be raising his salary the day I want to fire him. I mean, I think the whole issue was handled badly, but what I want to deal with now is, do I turn my back on a violation of the law that I just know in my heart occurred and stole a half a million dollars from this city? And do I do it because I'm afraid you guys are going to come up and say bad things about me? Do I turn my back because I'm afraid of the bad publicity? Why don't you just tell me, Mrs. Jennings, do you think that if I'm right, if that money was given to him and it was wrong, it was illegal to do it, should we go after it or should we walk away from it? If I gave that half a million dollars to your husband and it was wrong for me to do it, should I go and get it back from him regardless of who the person is, or should I leave it there? I mean, that really is the issue here. It's not whether people love or hate LaSalle. It's a half a million dollars. It was ours. The previous council gave it away illegally from what the attorneys tell me. That's really what I'd like to hear from you.
Okay, I oppose you digging into this at all. This should be one of those things you put behind you. It happened, we had our attorney here at the time, our attorney approved of it. You guys want, certain members of the council wanted to get rid of him. They got rid of him by payoff, not firing.
And isn't that what happened?
He didn't do anything to be fired for.
Isn't that what happened? We paid him off.
Yes.
And what I'm asking from you, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. You can tell me anything else, but that really is the discussion we should have. I also understand, and I think everybody else should understand this, that if my clients did what I told them to do, I wouldn't have very much work to do. It's the attorney's job to advise, not to approve. And it's my understanding, this was not approved. That advice was given, some of it was followed, some of it was not. The council members don't get to blame the attorney. They have to be accountable themselves, and they have to take responsibility for this themselves. Now, if you're telling me that it's in the best interest of the city to just walk away from this half a million dollars, that's what I want to hear.
Look, I didn't approve of this in the first place, because he didn't do anything wrong. So I don't think the city should have paid out that money. No, they should have kept the attorney, I mean, this city manager, because he was a good manager. He must have been a good manager, or not that many people would have showed up to support him all those council meetings.
And maybe he was. I really don't know. I was too close to it to see the forest from the trees. I just don't know. That's not the issue that I think we need to debate. The issue is, regardless of who took the money, if the law says they shouldn't have got it, and there was a deliberate attempt to avoid that law by some tap dance that they did in the back room, and we all know it was in the back room, don't we? That deal was hammered out in the back room. And now it comes out that the law says 18 months, and he got a half a million dollars more than what the law says, does it matter who got it? Does it matter if my mother got it? Mom, I'm suing you. If you take $500,000 that doesn't belong to you. That's my view. Tell me why we shouldn't do that.
Don't you think that he's been through enough? I mean, you know, he went through months-
Well, maybe he'll give it back to us.
-of pressure. How many people could even stand that pressure? I mean, you know, he earned every bit of money he got from the city from the pressure he was under.
Okay.
And for what? It's because certain power brokers wanted to get rid of him. Okay?
Couldn't it have been because his council wanted to get rid of him?
Pardon?
Couldn't, could it not have been? Can you make room for the possibility that it was his council that wanted to get rid of him? I mean, they stood up to the power brokers for a year and a half.
Three members of the council wanted to get rid of him.
Well, I understand that, what was it for, voted for it in the back room. I mean, let's be, all I'm saying is, let's be totally accountable. I'm willing to be.
Also, I thought you wanted to put, I mean, I thought you didn't want to have anything to do with what the council members previously did.
I never said that. I said when I campaigned-
At the last meeting.
I said when I campaigned, that people should not get money they didn't earn.
At the last meeting, you said-
Oh, I see, sure.
-you want to go back to the last council because I was not in it.
That's a good point.
That's what you said.
Okay. But what I'm hearing from you is, we should leave it alone. Is that right?
Right.
Okay, and I respect that. I think that that is a legitimate position, because I really don't know the answer. But what I'm unwilling to do is act like the problem doesn't exist, because it does exist. We have a decision to make.
And so now we've got two attorneys.
Well, actually, we've got probably about three.
We have the attorney over here, there was an attorney at the time that that happened. And it sounds like that he still approves of the contract.
I, well, let's ask him. Mrs. Jennings, let's ask him.
Want to redraw?
Let's ask him. Tell me.
I think you're putting him really on the spot.
Hey, he gets paid a lot of money.
I mean, he's not wrong, yes.
I think that there, the problem, and I was going to get into this before we got into this public speech, so I might as well say it right now. I think the problem with the code section is that it's, while it seems very clear on its terms, seems very clear, 18-month salary, plus additional non-cash benefits, including health insurance, that type of thing, that go away if you get another job. That seems like it's really clear.
Yeah, it does.
But what does salary mean? How is a court going to address salary? What makes up salary for the employee? And when you look at that, there are a lot of things beyond base salary that are included within the definition of salary for a number of reasons, mostly for tax reasons. Those would include contributions to retirement plans, contributions to providing a vehicle, shockingly, providing a cellphone. There are a lot of things that go into that. Vacation time, that's salary. We state it separately, but it's still salary. Admin time, sick leave, all of that goes into your salary when you're looking at it for tax purposes. And so when, I mean, one of the problems I also have is that a lot of what was said before and what was said to the last council was said in closed session. And if I were to divulge that at this point, I would be violating both the Brown Act and probably my fiduciary duty as a lawyer to the client. So I have to be very careful about where I go with that, because obviously, things have been said that were said in closed session, they've been said publicly. I don't want to be the one that is disclosing stuff said in closed session. So I've got to be very careful. I think there's room to maneuver within the definition of salary. I think that it's an open question whether you can give six months' notice. I mean, could we give him 12 months' notice? Could we give him three years' notice and extend that out? You know, I don't know where the courts are going to draw the line. I think six months was a pretty reasonable number to establish in a contract. But would that be upheld by the courts? I can't tell you. It's never been litigated. Neither has the definition of salary. So I can't tell you categorically that this is absolutely good or this is absolutely wrong. There are certain elements in it that if I were making the decision today, I wouldn't vote for it, but I'm not the one that's voting. It was council members voting. So, you know, that's kind of where we are, and hopefully I haven't disclosed anything that was said in closed session, but the-
Hey, if it was up to me, we wouldn't have closed session.
It's a great, yeah, that's fine, too.
All it does is make people angry. I mean, it's not like there's any great secrets of litigation, for heaven's sakes.
Except you wouldn't want to discuss strategy with your client in front of the other client, the other opponent. And we do have two closed sessions on this agenda.
Okay.
But how can you legally withdraw someone's contract?
Well, if the contract's illegal, it's done all the time.
But why wasn't it caught at that time?
I think it was.
Mr. McEwen was in on all those matters.
I think it was, and they voted it anyway. That's what I think happened. I wasn't there, I wasn't in the executive session.
No, so then I think you should leave it alone.
Think I should leave the room?
No, I think you should leave that alone.
Leave it alone.
That subject, drop it.
Fair enough, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
I do, thank you.
Also, you need to quit, maybe in your vice mayor, Mr. Smith, I think he's tough enough to take care of himself. If he's not, he doesn't need to be your vice mayor.
I don't like people being abused and taking the rap for what a lot of people are doing, and I see that with them, and I do, and I'm sorry. I don't like it. I think that, I don't know anybody that understands this city as well as the vice mayor. I know that we are accomplishing wonderful things in a very short period of time that I would not have been able to accomplish without his advice and his knowledge of how things work. Now, you know, I understand that he's made some people angry, and the anger is still out there, but I could not imagine having a more competent vice mayor. I just couldn't. And when this whole nonsense started, I didn't like him, you know? I mean, and I've told him that. I mean, there was a public perception of the vice mayor that is inaccurate. And once I got to know him and understand his knowledge of how this city works, it is truly phenomenal. He is a lot smarter than I am about how this city runs. And, you know, I just think we would do a lot better if some people that, you know, closed the door the moment they see him, would start talking to him, because he really knows how to implement ideas, he really knows how to make them happen. And you might just consider it. You just might be open to the possibility.
Okay, I'm not saying that he doesn't have knowledge. I think he's a very knowledgeable man. He does not use his knowledge in the proper way. He has a very bad personality to be in the job he's in.
But he's getting better, isn't he?
No.
No, he really is. Give him a chance.
You tell him to be quiet. He can't be quiet. He's just like you, he can't be quiet.
Well, I do have that problem, and that's my mother's fault. You really should take that up with her.
But, Mr. Mayor-
She should have beat me more, you know?
I think you could do a good job if you would just forget all this stuff, it's in the past, start anew. I think you're doing a good job on crime, on Section 8, all these things that you're approaching. But if you're digging up the past, you need to leave it alone.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Jennings, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Who do we have next?
One comment, please, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Out of, I look around here, and there was five of us in that closed session, so I just want to make one statement on behalf of Mr. McEwen. And this goes along with the Brown Act also. A lot of times, Mr. McEwen gets beat up for the Brown Act violations, or he's getting beat up for this contract, and he's not responsible for any of that. He's responsible for giving advice to the council. If there's a Brown Act violation, it rests solely 100% on the elected officials. If he gives advice, and I can tell you, he gave advice in the closed session, that doesn't mean it was followed. As he said, the council makes a motion, and they vote, and the responsibility falls solely on their shoulders. If the council said that something was illegal and the council voted for it anyway, it's not the city attorney that's responsible, it's the city council that's responsible. So that's the comment.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, here it comes. You're on the hot water now.
Y'all, I understand. Mr. Rodeo and I go back 30 years.
And I hope you remember that tonight.
Okay.
First of all, I think you should let it lie. There are a lot of problems in the City of Lancaster. We have water problems, we have a lot of vacant houses in the city, every neighborhood you go in there are vacancies, and I think you should start addressing those problems and move on. It's history. I spoke before the council that gave him that package, and I told him that night I was opposed to it. Number one, he resigned. I never heard of anybody resigning and getting a big payout. When you resign, you give up your job. But the council wanted to get rid of him so bad that they negotiated the contract because they didn't have the guts to fire him. If he's wrong, they should have fired him, and they should have said why. So the city negotiated a contract, and I was here that night, and the city attorney told the mayor how to make the motion to accept the resignation to make sure that they didn't violate the negotiation to giving that package, which I thought was deplorable. Jim Gilli, when he left city, he got $46,000, that's what he got. I was here. When Steve West left, he got- When Steve West left, he got $85,000, and I was here. And for a city council to sit there and give that kind of money away, it was terrible. But it's done. It's history. We have a new council, we have a new outlook out there, move ahead. The only thing you're going to do tonight is you're going to divide the community. You're going to have a lot of people in here that like LaSalle, they're going to get mad at you because you went and got the $500,000 from him. You know, you took a hit. If you really want to clean up the city of Lancaster and you're looking at LaSalle, I'm going to tell you, I know a lot of skeletons that you can go back to, and there's a lot of money that was given away that wasn't right back then. Are we going to go all the way back? Are we going to pick it all up? I wish we could, but it's history. And my advice to you, and I sat in that chair that you're sitting in, move on. Move on the city of Lancaster and do what's good for the city, and let's quit the fighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodeo. It was well said, Mr. Rodeo, thank you. Well, I guess we'll have the, the past mayor of section of the meeting, Lynn Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I wanted to speak to the LaSalle issue. We really honestly thought that this was all past us. I'm glad that you've asked for Mr. McEwen to analyze if there's a potential win or lose on this, but I guarantee and anticipate the attorney's fees will either equal or be more than what the $500,000 is you think you might regain from Mr. LaSalle. The other concern I have is that I believe that we may set a precedent with this action for any other California city manager's agreed departure within the state. Don't think that other city managers that either may or may not potentially be here sometime in the future, they wouldn't come here, they wouldn't want to be here. And lastly, I'm afraid for Mr. Bozickian, and I think you should make a note of this discussion tonight regarding any guarantees he thinks he may enjoy regarding his own contract, his own future. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Califf?
Never done this before, but sitting back there tonight and watching the actions up here appalls me. The arrogance that goes on needs to stop somewhere. If there's an issue with an overpayment of money to the prior city manager, don't tell me that that attorney right there didn't guide and say what was legal and what wasn't. Uh-uh. That's what he's on, on board for, that's why you pay him the salary. So don't, don't give me that.
Give you what?
The fact that he, it's up to the council. Yeah, it's up to the council with his guidance. So maybe if, if, if there's a legality there, you, maybe you need to look at the city attorney and see what he's doing to help the city if, if he's giving our money away that's illegal. You, you need to get along with your, your people on board here, everyone. I've read, I read the paper daily, and I'm embarrassed at what goes on here. We laugh about it at work, people from other communities, "Oh, I see your mayor and the city council are at it again." That's embarrassing for me as a citizen. You all need to get together and get to work and do your job and quit bringing stuff up, each and every one of you. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Califf?
Mayor, council, I, I wanted to go off on a spiel, too, but I guess I'm not going to do that.
Well, it's the night to rant, it's okay.
Well, you know, whether the legality issues of the financial package were brought up or not, the way I see it, it's somewhat irrelevant. It was voted four to one, vice mayor, you voted against it, but it was three to two to accept the buyout package. It's a, you know, it was three to two. Well, what was it then? Well, it was a three to two vote.
It was, just to clarify this, because the newspapers printed it a number of different ways, you're usually getting it right now, the three to, there were two votes.
Right, the, the financial package.
And the votes, the votes, let me finish. The votes in the back room on deciding what the termination contract was going to be was one vote. The votes out front were completely different. That's because it was a completely different subject matter.
To accept it.
Can I talk, please?
I, I know what it was, I, I know.
To accept the resignation. It didn't, and as Mr. Jeffress said, and he sat in, you see that Mr. Sillio said...
I was here, I was here that night, believe me.
This has nothing to do and does not affect the vote back there.
I understand that.
So the three to two vote had nothing to do, we could have all voted five oh not to accept his resignation.
I understand that, I understand, but my point is...
Well, no, 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 let me finish, you made, you wanted me to, you wanted me to...
I'm going to give you more time, don't worry, he's not going to use your time.
Okay. We could have voted five oh, and that doesn't mean Mr. LaSalle wouldn't have been able to resign or get the termination package that he actually got. So, but let's make sure we keep the votes up.
I, I fully understand that. My point is, whether or not legal, the legality of that financial package was brought up, whether it was or not, that really doesn't matter to me. The point was, when the final vote came out front and it was voted three to two to accept the deal, it's done. My point is, it's done. The horse was beat, the horse is dead, mayor, like everybody else is saying. Don't bring the horse back and put the club down, don't be beating it anymore. You know, it, it's a done deal, like my wife said, it's, it's an embarrassment. Horse is dead, leave it that way.
The city, the city council last year, along with Lancaster attorney and, excuse me, along with LaSalle's attorney and the city of Lancaster's attorney spent weeks hammering out a contract that was agreeable, agreeable to both parties and that followed the law. If Mr. Paris wants to take the city on another, Mr. Toad's, a while prior like we were on last year, I shudder to think the cost to the city and to the citizens of a lawsuit brought upon by Mr. LaSalle for breach of contract. Such an action could have been, could have irreversible effects on the next election in the city council, whether it takes place, be it in six months due to another recall or November of 2009, when the citizens of Mr. Smith have spoken as to whether, as to when we should have the next election, as to who will be elected and be removed from the council will be made by any decision voted upon here.
Diana Beard-Williams?
First off, I would like to say that I'm speaking for myself. Whenever I stand up to speak, I always hear these things that I'm Mayor Paris's leghugger, where I agree with, where I agree with everything you say, and that's not true.
I've noticed that, by the way.
Okay, you're right. I'm one of the people who wrote many letters to the editor condemning the city council about their treatment of Mr. LaSalle during that period of time. In fact, I think Bishop Perms got angry at me at one point because I kept beating up on him because he thought maybe I just didn't understand what was really going on, but I took LaSalle's side. But what I don't understand, even though at that time I was supportive of LaSalle, is that we don't live in a world, a country, or a community where anything is the final say. We have appeals courts, we have second opinions, we have other opportunities for people to review decisions that we have made. And if we have made a decision in haste because of the chaos or the emotion or the passion that went on during the LaSalle period of time, then I see nothing wrong if the price is right for a judge or another attorney to take a look at that package and tell us if we overdid it. $500,000 isn't coming out of your individual pocket. If it was, you'd be up here screaming, saying, "Mayor Paris and council, I want it reviewed." We heard about the violence-free zone, we hear about people losing their homes in this community, we hear about needing more sheriffs, we hear about all the things that we need to improve the quality of life in Palm, I mean, in Lancaster, and yet, we're not willing to say, "Take a second look," depending on the price of whether or not this was overdone or not, and that's what I don't get. I am sorry, I've been through hell in life, many of you have been through hell in life, we've all had our crosses to bear. I don't think LaSalle's cross was any, any heavier than a lot of crosses that you had to bear, Mr. Man, when you talked about the election, or Cilio has talked about hitmailers, or people have talked about how they've been treated. LaSalle did not suffer any more than a lot of us suffer in life. There is nothing wrong with us having a second look at whether or not that $500,000 can be better spent in terms of the quality of life in this community. A name-calling isn't what it's supposed to be about. Thank you, and I am not your leghugger. I just happen to respect you. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor and the council, let me clear the racket on two or three matters. The first thing is, without any disrespect by the title mayor, allow me to call you Rex Paris at this moment, to take us back years and years. We were friends, we are friends, and that's not going to change. I want you to feel free to do what you believe you need to do as a mayor of this city. And I appreciate you mentioning my name and saying you're sorry I'd be in the room. Hey, I'm with you. I want you to know, I want that very clear with everybody, that is not to change. And if it did, it'd be on you, it ain't going to be on me. I don't appear to many to be a big boy, but I am. In fact, sometimes it takes a little bit more to not say a word than it does to say a word. So I'm, I'm good with who I am, I like myself. I am very happy with what I did in eighteen years here in this city. And all of the things that has come through, I've done my very best vote. Now, that's part one. Don't forget that now I'm back to mayor. I respect my mayor, I love my mayor, and I'll be right here for you no matter what. Mr. Smith, as far as you are concerned, Mr. Mayor, you understated his value to this city as far as I'm concerned. And I said that openly, I said again that I will be right there as long as there's breath in my body to support a guy like Ronald Smith. Because he truly loves the city, but he is a no-nonsense person, and people many times don't buy that. That's part one. Part two, part three is, all of this mess started as an appraisal. Now, there's certain things I can't say because I was in the closed session, and I was the mayor at the time. But all of this started over an appraisal that Mr. LaSalle did not like. Okay? And so I want you to know that as far as, for one, I wasn't about to touch him in terms of firing him. I didn't want to fire him. But I spent hours on end, which I cannot go into other than the fact that I spent hours on end with my door closed in the mayor's office to say, "Bob, don't quit, let's talk." So as far as I am concerned, he was not fired. But I cannot make him talk about that. We went over some things that he and I disagreed on, we went over some things that he and I agreed on, and what I thought was a summary of the whole thing is, I thought that he was going to walk on with us and talk to us, and we go from there. But it all started, am I out of line here? If I am, you got to yell. Okay, I'm good?
So far.
Okay. I'm not going to go outside of that, and if I do, you just yell. But the point is, I want the community to know that I did promise him that I would not badmouth him in any way. I told him I wouldn't. So I'm not badmouthing, I'm only stating the basic fact. All of this started over an appraisal, and I won't go into the rest of all that he said concerning that. Now, with that said, I never voted one time on anything that I thought was illegal. Now, I laid it out in, in, in the back room, if you want to call it the back room, I laid it out in the back room, I said, "Okay, if Mr. LaSalle wants to leave us..."
Careful.
Okay? Very good.
You're going into the closed session items.
Okay, very good. All right. Let's see how to say that in another way.
Henry, let me, let me intercheck something.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're sitting here struggling to find another $75,000 on a program that we know will keep children out of prison. And we know that, we know that, that will happen. And we, and we, we can't find the money. And, and I'm watching a half a million dollars leave this city, and in my heart, I know that it was wrong. And, and, and I think that there's a lot of people in this room who know it was wrong. You know, I thought Mayor Rodeo made a lot of sense in what he said. But let's be clear about what, what we're talking about. We're, we're talking about continuing with government, doing a tap dance around what the intent of the people is, is clear in the, in the, in eighteen months. I mean, I mean, I know how lawyers can tap dance around words and make salary mean something it's not, but there isn't anybody in this room who doesn't know what their salary is. Raj, you know what your salary is? You know, I mean, all of us know what our salary is, just like he did. And, and it's not just this, you know? You know, how many millions of dollars did we approve today? What was it, 18 million, 15 million of checks and different things that the city spent today? The, the, and I, and I don't want to be a mayor of a city where it's okay to tap dance around that stuff. You know, it, it, I mean, we all talk about transparency and how we want it all out in the open, and we all want it fair and right and just, this wasn't. And what, what we as a council have got to decide, are we going to let this man take the money or not? But let's not lose sight of this, you know? What contract comes up tomorrow that we, I mean, there's just been deals, and, and Mayor Rodeo was right, there have been a lot of deals in the past that the law gets finessed because the council wants to finesse it. You know, and, and you put, put the, the money in this column instead of this column because it's not right to put it in this column. And, and, you know, and I know that you stood guard on that a lot because I, I heard you do it, I watched you do it, and it still slips by. You know, and, and I'm just saying, you know, I don't care who it makes mad, let's put it out on the table and decide, and the five of us are going to have to decide. But let's remember what we're deciding. We're deciding this, this violence-free zone is now not going to be in how many schools because it's more important to us that we let Mr. LaSalle take the money to Florida. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't think Mrs. Jennings thinks that's right. Now, Mrs. Jennings may be right that it's better for us to just go on and do better next time, but that's the choice. That's, that's the choice. And I think we, we decide this in closed session, right? Or do we? Can we decide it in, in, in public session?
You can decide it in, in open session, or if you choose to go into closed session, the Brown Act permits you to state the reason for going in and the Code section under which you're going in and then agree on the side.
Well, I'd like to hear the whole story. And I don't want any, any tap dancing. I want to hear the whole story, and I want to know, can we get... And I wanna know, can we get this money back? And how quick can we get it? And what is the risk of proceeding? And it's harder for me to proceed in that direction in light of what Mayor Rodeo said and, believe it or not, Mrs. Jennings, in light of what you said. I think you're sincere that it would be better for us to leave this alone. But that's something the five of us should decide. And we shouldn't run from it. And we shouldn't act like it's not a problem. Because it will be a problem tomorrow.
I just think, I just want you to know, I think my main issue for standing before you is to let you know that I have no problem with where you're going. We're still with you and not only with you as mayor, but with you as a friend. So I'm not hurt at all. Again, I like myself. I've done, I did the best I knew at the time when I did what I did. Okay? But with you opening this up, there's, of course, another light to that. And I'm willing and open to hear it and to support whatever is right.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
I guess what I wanna do is table this until after the closed session, and I wanna hear the story. And I want us all to lay down the...
So, Mr. Mayor, you wanna put this on as a closed session item then?
Yes.
This is not on the agenda as a closed session item. However, the Brown Act doesn't... It requires items that you anticipate in closed session to have a particular designation and safe harbor. But it does allow you to either state on the agenda or state publicly before going into closed session that the code section under which you desire to go into closed session on, and it would be Government Code Section 54956.96...
Put it on... I don't wanna read the editorial. Put it on the agenda for the closed session at the next meeting, and we'll make a decision then.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Now, moving on.
I don't know if I'm supposed to say 101 or if I was for something else. It's Richard Macias. He didn't know what it was for.
Mr. Macias, did you wanna say something? I don't know what you're speaking on, but it doesn't matter coming up.
My name's Richard Macias. And I wanted to address a little bit of what you guys were saying. One of the things that I used to do when I was employed, I was, I'm a retired parole agent. And when we saw problems that were occurring, the state would get some of the supervisors together and whatever institution had the issues, they'd form a team, an assessment team. We would go to the institution, find out what the problem was, address the issues that caused the situations to come apart, go over the procedures, the post orders, all the information. We weren't there to point fingers. We were there to find out what the issues were and correct them. And I think that is something that needs to be done by the people that make the contracts and prepare everything and set limits and identify salary, all these other things. That's just one thing that you guys need to take into consideration. Do an assessment of the situations. Do an assessment of the contracts that you give out before you give them out so that we don't run into these issues. Because I agree to a certain extent with you with, yeah, that's a lot of money to go out. That was money that could've gone to the baseball fields that were supposed to be built on Avenue I. And I've been following this for, since 2005 when I was president of the Youth Pony League. And now I keep going, coming every year, finding out, "Where are we? Where are we?" And they say, "Well, it's gone back into redevelopment, and they're going to reduce the number of fields." Well, if we were to build the fields the way that they were originally intended, where this gentleman got Employee of the Year, they used his Animal Valley Press, Mr. Thomas McEwen, a letter where he was trying to get funding for it. That money, I don't know what happened to it. It disappeared. This topographical map shows all the fields that they told us at the meeting that I attended were gonna be built, they already have been graded. They've just been sitting there since 2006. What happened to the money? I don't know.
Mr. Macias, back me up a little bit. What's the intersection we're talking about? Where's this at?
Third Street and Avenue I.
It's at the Old Fairgrounds, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I see. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
This is the map key. This is the letter from Mr. McEwen. This is a copy of Employee of the Year that is a plan.
Okay.
But that's just one of the things that, what happened to that money? There was a lady that made an article to the Animal Valley Press, Dorothy McCoy. And she said, "I bet these mistakes won't be made regarding the development of Gilly Park and Armegosa Creek." I don't know. This was back in 2007.
Well, I can think of a lot of mistakes that were made in regards to Armegosa Creek.
Yeah. But the same thing, money disappears. And we need to do things for the kids so that we can keep them out of crime. One other thing, just as a peace officer, I saw in the newspaper where some sheriff's deputies were practicing entries into houses. I think they deserve to have Kevlar helmets to protect them. That's something that the money could be going to. Whatever you guys decide's fine with me, but we need to not relive the past, the mistakes of the past. We need to correct them so they do not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macias. Sometime next week, can you tell me what...
Yeah, I'd be happy to address it. It was discussed during our budget discussions as well, too. It's a matter of priorities, and it isn't our 10-year plan. It's just other priorities.
Okay, thank you. But I'd like you to brief me on it if you would.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, so we're clear on what we're gonna do? We'll deal with it next meeting in closed session and make a decision. And then go one way or the other. City Manager, any announcements?
If I might, I'd like to address you from the podium on the state budget issue, what I know to date.
Let me talk to you about that a little bit. I had a discussion with Senator Renner. Senator Renner will oppose any long-term taking of money from the cities. There is apparently some discussion going on about a short-term situation that will have earmarked money, like from the lottery or something of that nature. But he will oppose any deprivation of funds from the city with the governor's latest plan. So he can't steal our money either, meaning the governor.
Not that he won't try.
Can I address from the podium?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I do appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, your prompt action on that. At the end of this, I'm gonna give each of you some information sheets, and I'd like each of you to call any contacts you have in the state because this is a line in the sand that we really need to protect local funds. I'm gonna be very brief on this, as brief as I can. If what's being proposed happens, out of this year's budget, the City of Lancaster could be hit for $6.4 million. City of Palmdale, as a comparison, is $4.8 million. You spent, and staff spent, seven months cutting your budget by 7%. Your operating budget from $92 million to $85 million, that's a 7.6% cut. You cut your total budget by 16% from, by $52 million. You were still able to increase public safety and maintain services. That was because of the work of all the staff and the council, conservative financial practices and not spending money you didn't have. You had a rainy day fund that we haven't had to go into as yet. Be very blunt, it's wrong to steal city funds after cities have done their budgets. It's wrong anytime. It's particularly wrong after people have made cuts and made plans to come back in and do that. It will force critical service cuts up and down the state, whether they're short-term or long-term cuts. Short-term this year will, critical service cuts in public safety. Even worse, if the paybacks are tied to increases such as whatever, if they're tied to increases that aren't there, there's no recourse for cities. If the state says, "Well, we had hoped this fund source would increase." It didn't. Too bad. Even worse than that, and this is the most egregious, what's being proposed in terms of taking away economic development dollars is $3 million a year annually. Okay? That would eviscerate our economic development budget. Okay? That's half of our economic development budget. And that's up and down the state. And quite honestly, I don't know any other way to say it, it's a dumb idea. Okay? Just when you're in an economic downturn, just when you need jobs, just when you need businesses, to take away the very sources of funds that cities, not the state, cities help incentivize and bring in jobs, to take those away doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Again, I'm gonna give you at the end of this some talking points after the meeting, and I'd encourage you all, whatever contacts you have at the state, to do this. The League of Cities, I think, has done a very good job from a staff perspective and from representing elected officials. It's time for all cities to stand up and make calls. And Mayor, I appreciate you making the call already. And I know the rest of you will, too.
And that goes for the audience. You know, I mean, looking around, there's a lot of people out there that have relationships that could benefit us right now. I mean, $6 million means all the good stuff goes away this year.
Absolutely. And again, to try to create jobs without taking the money that's set aside to do that doesn't make sense. But that's a very good point. Folks, it's not just, you know, cities' money or council. It's taxpayers' money, and everyone should be outraged. I agree with you. I have two quick announcements, folks, that... The first, there was a woman here, I think it's Mrs. Storm, who was not able to stay because of the length of the meeting. And she wanted to advise you about AIDS walk at AV High School. We'll get that on your calendar for proclamation. Also, Ms. Celiopoulos, Dixieopoulos was not able to speak on that item, or we, there's just some confusion. So she has some information that I will make sure gets to all of you as well, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did I pass over new business or...
I don't think...
We didn't have it.
Oh, I see.
Okay. Well, what's all this?
It's unagendaized items.
Oh. At the very end? I mean, they have to wait after closed session?
It's next. It's next.
Oh, I see. Okay. Ah, public business from the floor. Okay, good. The city clerk has an announcement?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for public business from the floor on items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. If you'll please fill those out, we respectfully request you fill them out very clearly and concisely so that if necessary, the city council, the city manager, and city staff can get in contact with you. You are limited to three minutes each, and we do respectfully ask that you pay attention to your time to allow other people to have their three minutes as well. State law does prohibit council from taking action on items that are not on the agenda. Thank you.
Jessica Rumbaugh, is it Rumbaugh?
Thank you, Mayor Paris and Council, for allowing me this opportunity to speak before you. My name is Jessica Rumbaugh. I'm a full-time working mother, and my husband is a veteran, and he works full-time as well. At the beginning of the year, I was looking into seeking some financial assistance for my young daughter, and I was given the name of a facility here in Lancaster. I was told I would need some specific paperwork, and I was also to be ready for the appointment to take some time. So I did. I had the paperwork ready. I went very early in the morning, ready to be seen, hopefully even to wait to be seen that day. When I approached the front desk, the clerk about setting up the appointment, the first question she asked me was if I spoke Spanish. When I told her that I did not, she then told me that appointment available, the next appointment available will be in a month. I was a little taken back by that response and, of course, a little frustrated. So I then asked her if I did speak Spanish, when would be the next available appointment? She told me I could be seen by the end of that week. I tried to ask her why it would take so long for me to have an appointment because I didn't speak Spanish and I only spoke English. She got very frustrated and would not give me any more information, and it was no longer helpful after that. Of course, I left feeling very upset and very offended. There were only two people in the waiting room. Several of the employees were in the back just chit-chatting. And so I had to leave because I couldn't have an appointment, even though I had all the paperwork that I was told to bring with me. I was just, I was very offended that here I am, I speak our nation's language, English. And I felt like I was a second-class citizen because I didn't speak English, I mean, I didn't speak Spanish. I spoke English. And I just wanted to bring that before you because I am a resident here in West Lancaster, and I went to that facility, having everything I was supposed to have before me, and I had to leave because I couldn't speak Spanish. Thank you for your time.
Wait a minute, before you go, what was the agency?
It was a medical office, a medical WIC office. I was told I could go in there, seeking possible medical for my daughter. And I was told that.
Could you talk to Norm Hickling and see if we... Somebody will be in touch with you and we...
Is that a state office? I'm honestly not sure. I'm 90% sure. But yeah, whoever it is, we can certainly make contact.
Very, very grooms. Would you talk to Ms. Rumbaugh before she leaves and make sure that this gets looked into and resolved? Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Grooms will help you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. There's a Victoria, but no last name.
Mayor Hearns, may I, I mean, Mayor Hearns. Mayor Paris, may I say something about...
Yes, hold on one second.
About Ms. Rumbaugh's situation here is a perfect example as to why I believe the City of Lancaster should proclaim English as the official language. I've been wanting to bring this up, and it's something that I feel pretty strongly about. As I've mentioned before, I do feel like we're losing our American identity every day by bits and pieces. There are people who are writing books on how to be an American, how to teach your children how to be American, how to be, teach your children how to be patriotic. This is one of the things that I believe is whittling away our American values. I would really like to talk to the council about maybe thinking about doing that as a proclamation or something. I know our nation's not gonna do it. It's been brought up several times. They won't pass it. The State of California supposedly did state that English was our national, our state language in 1986. But I know as someone who ran for city council, when it came to the ballot, I was basically forced to put my ballot statement in English, I mean, in Spanish as well as English. I didn't have the choice. And I had to pay for it. That was offensive to me. So therefore, California is not sticking by what they stated was their official language, which is English. So I believe it's time to go ahead and address this. We have a presidential candidate that's asking Americans to learn Spanish. Make sure that your children learn Spanish. And I don't have anything against Spanish-speaking people. My husband is one. But at this point, I just think it's something that we need to discuss as a council. Is it something that we do for the City of Lancaster?
There's a couple things that I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rozigian and Mr. McEwen, is my understanding is the previous council actually passed an ordinance that made Spanish, the Spanish ballot...
No? It's a federal law requirement. The Department of Justice imposed that.
If I could inquire with the city clerk, Jerry, I remember you saying something about how somebody was opposed to having their ballot statement in Spanish and...
Yes, there were several that were against it, and council did approve 5-0 to have it in English and Spanish. But at the same time, it is a federal law. So it was just one of those laundry list of items we had to go through to process the election. It's a resolution that all cities put on their ballot, put on for councils to approve so we can move forward.
Okay. Now, if you think the LaSala contract caused heat, just wait. Let's put it on the agenda. Let's have the discussion.
Yep. I agree.
And now, everybody who wants to speak about it can speak about it and...
Mayor Paris.
But Mrs. Jennings, I don't want you to accuse me of trying to get headlines over this because I didn't do it. Okay?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Mayor Paris, instead of the next agenda, we'll be putting it on in September so we can prepare.
Okay.
That's okay.
Good. And, you know, let's narrow down exactly what we wanna do. And if it's a couple of motions that, you know, that'll solve the whole issue at once, let's do that. And let's get it done. Okay? One way or the other. Good enough, Mrs. Marcus? Oh. Okay, good. Victoria, this is the day of controversy, isn't it? I mean, there wasn't enough controversy tonight. You're going to bring this under the table?
Yeah, I know, I know. Everybody calm down. Okay, good evening, Mayor.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and city council members. I've come here to open the topic of concern for all Antelope Valley medicinal cannabis patients due to a recent ordinance in Palmdale. Yes, I am a patient, I'm an advocate, a mother and a member of American for Safe Access. In 1996, the Compassionate Use Act, Proposition 215, voted, we the people in California and 10 other states, for this act to follow. In 2002, I had an injury as an employee of an LA county. Therefore, my injury caused me to lose my license as a paramedic. I struggle every day with a debilitating disc disease and an autoimmune deficiency due to gastric bypass surgery complications. After extensive research and trial and error, believe me, truly, a lot of error, and even doctors within the AV have chosen and realized that this is my medicine of choice. This has helped me to function every day with my daughter, take her to activities with control of my pain, my nausea and other disorders that I have, not miss out on local events. I never thought I would be here on a podium supporting such a matter, especially with my background, my education and how I serve my community where I used to live before. But now I'm a resident Lancaster of the AV and access is not convenient, it's not, it's far, it's costly and it's dangerous. There's nothing else left but the black market. It's not acceptable. The black market is not acceptable for a qualified 35-year-old patient who's in need of her medication and a lot of other qualified patients that are out there. I used to work in Tarzana Wellness Center in Tarzana. I worked in that shop for a year. It's a wellness center and believe me, it was ran beautifully, ethically, conservatively. I've seen a lot of AV patients here. I'm not going to say that because of HIPAA laws and regulations and I know that, but maybe we are not ready for a shop. And I, like I said, I was on the news last week, you know, with Channel 3 and the city of Palmdale, but we're definitely ready for advocacy, awareness, education. There's lots of things, lots of information that could be out there. I could be at the Antelope Valley fairgrounds, I could be at an expo, a women's expo, a health fair, clinics. I mean, there's doctors here that are okay with what I do and there's other means of this industry and this job. I am the first person that I graduated cannabis college, Oxford University, it is out of Oakland, California. There is a school in LA and I'm proud to say that I graduated from that school and they gave me the knowledge and all the legal aspects, the politics and everything else that went into it. I'm asking here today, I'm going to leave this information, but I'm asking here today if we can just possibly sit down and work with the city manager here with yourself and also in Palmdale and our surrounding cities, if we can just possibly make an organization and maybe just take steps on how we can organize this, just like Oakland did with Measure Z. Maybe we could possibly do the same here. Let us be the first city. Antelope Valley, not San Fernando Valley. I'm not saying anything bad about San Fernando Valley, but we can make it happen here. Thank you.
Don't go anywhere. You know, this is one of those issues that everybody who's in elected office, it triggers run as fast as you can run. It really does. And I'm not sure that we should. I'm not sure one way or the other. You know, and I'm reasonably confident that you don't have any trouble at all buying marijuana on the streets of Lancaster and Palmdale, that...
Look at the way I look.
In fact, the Sheriff's Department doesn't even write the tickets anymore because it's too much trouble. And so we have this whole group of criminals making all this money without any regulation or without any taxation. And there's nothing that I'm saying because I'm scared to talk about it, too.
Hard to come up here. I've been here since last year.
There's nothing...
And it's hard. It's hard to come up here and speak of this topic and I waited. I waited till more advocacy, more education, more awareness, working in the valley. And I don't want to get arrested if... I was working in a shop in the valley and I have patients here in the Antelope Valley and my job requires me that I can...
Okay, hold on a second. I want to do something here. And you guys tell me if this is okay, because I know what you're all feeling. I'm feeling the same thing. I don't know what the answer to this is, but I know everybody's afraid to look at it. And whenever we're afraid to look at something, I think we make bad decisions. Axel, I would like somebody from the Sheriff's Department that is really smart, right? I mean, there's a lot of the... Mr. Green, how dare you laugh? I mean, I want somebody with a scientific background, who's very knowledgeable to... Victoria, what's your last name?
My name is Victoria Zavala and I'm a resident of West Lancaster.
Perhaps with Ms. Zavala on this, but let's... I would like an answer. I would like an answer. Does it diminish the community? Does it enhance the community? How many people are in medical need that are really using this? And let's take a fresh look at it and what is the impact to the city, both financially and socially? And then let's not run from this. Let's make a decision. Are you up for that, Ms. Marcus, to look at it? If we're going to do that, can we include any evidence? If there are any peer-reviewed studies that show that smoking marijuana meets or exceeds any other form of pain relief? We can. I don't know that I want to get into the merits of it. What I want to get into is, is it going to... I mean, there is a state law out there. Is there that says that this is totally legal?
Because California courts...
If it's going to adversely affect the community, I don't want to do it. But if the possibility exists that it would have no adverse effect at all? And I don't know the answer, but what I do know is that we as a council shouldn't be afraid to ask the hard question and then see what people think.
Well, my one comment is, because I have discussed this before with some people and I spoke to a registered nurse and asked her specifically, and she said there's no reason for medical marijuana because there are other alternatives out there for medical.
But unfortunately, like if I have gastric bypass, I have malabsorption. That has been helpful. I know patients that have kidney disease that are kidney donors, their father has donated their kidney. AIDS, cancer, if there is, if there's doctors here in the Antelope Valley that are prescribing it, I could show you written prescription.
Okay, but we're not having that debate today. We're not having that debate today.
But I could bring American for Safe Access.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
They could show those clinical...
Axel, let's ask Dr. Brown, who at the hospital should be assigned to assist us on this? And let's make an intelligent decision and then get it behind us one way or the other. Because I don't know the answer. I know that there's this enormous amount of taxes going to Van Nuys that's not coming here. And I just don't know the answer. I just want to look at it. And, you know, my fear will probably take hold and I'll vote against it, but before it grabs a hold of me and makes me...
There's a lot of patients are now realizing that going down below is, you know, costly, the gas and everything, and if there was just one way, one means that you could see the other cities, other counties have implemented, like the City of San...
Let's put a small group together, let's look at it intelligently and put our fear aside and make an intelligent decision. And if the doctors tell us there's a need for this, then we may have a fresh look. Would we agree with that? Or would we? I mean, we've got some smart doctors, let's hear what they have to say. Fair enough?
Yes, could I leave any information that the council would like to...
Talk to Captain Anderson and he will work with you on this.
Thank you so much.
Good, thanks. We're getting confused.
There's another one. He just finished.
Is Arnie coming back up?
Yeah, he wants to come back up. We finished Victoria's there.
All right, so we're done with that one. And we have Darlene Peterson?
For the time is a charm.
Are you going to be nice to me?
Yes, I'll force myself. I just wanted to point out, earlier in the evening, I mentioned that some of you may have a hearing problem from time to time. We have an attorney, had an attorney who gives good advice. He went to law school to learn this.
He probably got better grades than me, too.
Yeah, probably. And anyway, he gives advice and the three, or somebody on the council didn't follow the advice. Had they followed the advice, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight about this contract.
Wait a minute, you're getting two bites at the apple. Darlene, you're cheating.
Did we have a limit?
You're cheating.
I'm studying to be a lawyer. What can I tell you? How do you like that?
We're past that issue.
Well, I just, I want to, I just want to give you the good example of they didn't listen. And if they had, we wouldn't be in this situation, right? And I think that, like you say, you're good for saying we should put things behind us. I want you to practice what you preach.
Yeah, but when I said that last week, you were opposed to putting it behind us.
Well, I'm a new woman. You want us to forget and forgive and all this stuff, okay?
I don't, I'm not saying you're wrong, Darlene. I don't know that we should...
I want you to practice what you preach. If we're to put things behind us and move on, I want you to do the same thing and that means...
Wait a minute, are we reaching a deal here? Are we reaching that we're all going to put all this nonsense behind us?
I'm not putting it in writing because you have witnesses on...
Well, you've got Mr. Pelka up there. Is he in on this deal?
You know, I don't squeal on nobody. No, I don't squeal on him. And seriously, they didn't listen and if they'd have taken that man's advice, we probably wouldn't be in this mess.
I think you're right. I think you're absolutely right.
And I seriously think we ought to let it go because this is not Mr. LaSalle's fault. He didn't make the mistake. You give me that kind of...
But I'm asking you, Darlene, is there a deal on the table here?
Well, we're discussing it.
Okay.
If you give me that kind of money, you know, you would not have an easy time getting it back, right, wrong or indifferent.
Wait a minute, they gave him more money than I spent on the election and that was a lot of money.
Well, I know you did. I know you did. Not many of mine, I can tell you, because I didn't donate. But I think, you know, you should do what you want us to do.
Thank you.
And then we'll talk about a deal.
Okay. Thank you.
See my lawyer.
Okay.
All right? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All of it.
You've been waiting patiently.
Yeah. Please, can I have a...
You know, there's, folks, I'm getting loose on security. You cannot come up to the dais. You have to give it to the folks over there. Those guys in the uniforms get all upset and, you know, increase their stress load. It's horrible. It'll be a workers' comp case before you know it.
I'm a little groggy because I ate at the Befia El Trillo, but regarding the LaSalle thing, I think that you guys should...
We'll pass that.
Okay.
It's got to be new business.
Okay, new business, okay. I've come today because I'm really, I was on the Little Rock Town Council about 20 years ago and we were talking about the water issues and stuff like that and we just keep talking about it and talking about it. 20 years have gone by and here I am, we're talking about the same thing. It's like this valley lacks leadership on big, the big ideas, the vision. And so I've come today before you because I'd like to see us create the Antelope Valley Community Service District. District would take over county sewer, water, flood control, water, land conservation, mosquito district, protect significant ecological areas, take over and develop regional parks, regional planning and create a comprehensive master plan for the Antelope Valley. The county can no longer take care of the needs of the Antelope Valley. The county board of supervisors has 3 million people to worry about. We need a local powerhouse government to represent and take care of the 400,000 people that live here and not all these cities and districts trying to come together. We did that back in 1990. It just doesn't work. People don't get elected, there's infighting, it just doesn't happen. We learn from the past, don't repeat things. And I was reading Thursday's Valley Press and I was reminded of the flood control district. I don't know if you guys remember that, back in 91, we tried to do that. I thought maybe that was a good idea, that was going to bring everybody together. Art Wallace, I think, was the chairman at the time on that project, but it failed the votes. But Vice Mayor Ron Smith was quoted as saying, we need to have a collective, we need to collectively speak with one voice, have one public relations campaign. This is going to be the best thing for our citizens. And it's true. We need something that brings everybody together. Let the cities worry about, you know, senior citizens and art programs and all this stuff. Let a bigger government agency worry about this big infrastructure and the big questions that we need and we face. We need, we need another government body. This isn't going to work. We're 400,000 people, being 500,000 in probably 10 more years. We need to do something. We need to have vision, common sense and the will to make things happen. We've already lost $25 million, $50 million in grant money we could have used on water. There's only three things you can do for water. Conserve, import water and recycle water. That's it. It's a very simple thing and we keep on talking and talking. I'll be six feet under, so will all of you probably. So we need to do something. Now, I also want to talk about, I think, most important thing is for an off-ramp on Lancaster Boulevard. I remember as a kid, driving with my mom to Lancaster Marketplace in downtown Lancaster and we'd get over here and it was very hard because we'd have to go down Avenue J, then up 20th Street West and then on the freeway to J8. And same thing with Lancaster Boulevard. That's why it's dead, because there's no access. You can have location, 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 but if you don't have access, you have nothing. I'd like you guys just to take the time to go over this vision for Lancaster and I appreciate it.
I'll read it. Thank you very much. I don't think you filled this out correctly, Mr. Rodeo. It says neutral. I've never known you...
I am neutral.
I've never known you to be neutral.
I'm neutral. Number one, I'm very concerned what I see happening in our city. Mac Hands is closing their doors. That's another box. Ralph's closed theirs, fenced off like a prison. H&amp;E went out of business, it's closed down. The skating rink has never been occupied. I see all these boxes in our city that are empty. And we talk about all these commissions and everything we're doing and, you know, when I sat there, I lost that position there because I filled a box. We went out and got PetSmart and put them in and I was defeated.
That's right, I remember that.
I think this council better get your head together and you better get out there and find some people to start putting in those buildings because each day I drive around this town, I keep seeing more empty things, more empty houses, more empty businesses. And I think that's what we should be concentrating on. Mr. Mayor, you have an opportunity to change the direction of the City of Lancaster and I hope you do change it. And I hope you go out there and we start putting people together, you have a good staff, good redevelopment agency, and I think you should direct them to go out and find people and put them in those buildings. Because you talk about crime. Crime will get worse because when a guy drives down the street and sees a big box fenced off like a prison, that's what breeds crime. And I urge you to really look at that and concentrate on those things and move the city forward and let old dogs lay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
You know, thank you for that comment, Mr. Rodeo, and it comes in loud and clear, but I'd like to state that you are absolutely correct that we have a top-notch redevelopment agency. And I can tell you that they are actively working and aggressively working to fill every single one of those and bring more economy here to the, to the City of Lancaster. So the staff is working very hard and they do a great job.
I think you're going to be surprised. I mean, they really are developing some things that, I'm proud to be a part of this. They're doing a wonderful job. How old are you now? No, don't tell me. You know, I don't see you on the walk with the mayor. You could be 90 if you would...
I'm still wanting marriage.
Oh, okay. In the way of new business, by the way, a new idea came out with a walk from the mayor. We're going to try to put together a senior symphony. Isn't that a great idea? All seniors, symphony. We're excited about it. Just thought I'd throw that out. Holly Holka.
I'm calling, I'm sorry, I'm speaking about graffiti on an empty lot that's directly across from my home. Last January 2007, my husband and I were here for the planning commission because the owner who had just bought that property wanted to develop the lot into eight homes subdivided into a cul-de-sac. And we had some concerns and the man answered the concerns, his name is Medgar Parish. I'm assuming because of the current economic situation, the homes were not developed, it's I'm assuming because of the current economic situation, the homes were not developed, it's still an empty lot. It was up for sale for a while, then the for-sale sign came down, and it's still Mr. Parrish's property.
That's Parrish with an H?
Parrish, yes.
Okay, good.
About, in May, I think it was, they, the property is block-walled on the north and south side, because there's a church on one side and a home on the other, and then the back wall is wood fenced in.
What are the cross streets?
It's on 17th Street West, just north of Lancaster Boulevard, behind the Latter-day Saints Church. And it used to belong to the Latter-day Saints before they sold it to Mr. Parrish. There's a fence along the front, the sidewalk, that's about a three-foot-high chain-link fence. In May, they sub-fenced off a section of it, maybe a quarter of it, because Mr. Parrish rented it to a construction company that is subcontracted with the County of Los Angeles to work on the west-side trunk line, which is a sewer project that's gonna take like a year. Once they fenced off that area, graded the property, they moved on a whole bunch of heavy work equipment and barriers and signs and porta-potties and things like that, they've left it alone. Nothing's been done ever since. And honestly, I work nights, and I've been dreading the day when they start working because all those things will beep. But what's happened since is that the walls have been graffitied. And there's one wall that's inside the little sub-fenced area, and they did the wall, and they did the property that belongs to the construction company, which is called Trout Wine Construction. And they figured, well, that's their problem, it's their stuff. But then the wall that's on the north side of the property, which is outside of the sub-fenced area, has also been graffitied. And I called the office of the city council, or not the city council, but the sub, whatever the city office is you're supposed to call for graffiti. I called it three times, and each time they said it would be taken care of, and finally I got a call back saying that it was on private property and it was subcontracted out so they wouldn't do anything about it. And now there's more graffiti being on that wall because, you know, one tagging has to be countered by another tagging. I'm wondering if either the city can do something to get rid of the graffiti, to paint it over the way they do in other areas, or else if they can require the property owner or the property rentor to get rid of the graffiti. Because graffiti is just that whole broken window theory that once graffiti comes, more crime comes, and our neighborhood is just sitting there waiting for something else to happen.
Okay. We'll fix it.
Thank you.
If you can give us, we'll talk to you, I'm sorry, over here. We'll talk to you afterwards and get some specific...
You know, last week Elizabeth Brubaker took me through how code enforcement works, and she really has done an amazing, amazing job on accountability with code enforcement and the way it's tracked and the way it pops up, and this'll be taken care of very quickly, I have no doubt. All right? And if it doesn't, you know, call me, send me an email. Okay? Not on the blog, though, okay?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd like to start tonight with a story that is so delightful that I have to share it with you. Sunday night I was getting ready to have a small workout and enjoy the Olympics, and I made a cup of coffee, and my wife generously reached in the refrigerator and pulled out the coffee-made chocolate raspberry creamer, and she said, "There's a little bit left in there." She gave it to me so she could say that she shared it with me, but there was just a little drip. So I put it in my coffee and enjoyed it. I says, "Yeah, it's all gone." And my little six-year-old came running up and he said, "I never got to try that." And instead of telling him, "Well, you don't really try coffee creamer," I says, "Okay, come here." I didn't think there was anything left in there, so I told him, opened his mouth like a little bird, and I sprinkled it in. Well, to my surprise, a bunch came out and went right in his mouth. He froze for a second, and then he did this five-second sugar rush dance that was just so cute. And then he looked at me with great intensity and he said, like he was about to go do something, "What store did you buy that at?" So he was ready to go, and that was just so cute. You know, I was thinking last time, and I told Councilman Smith before the meeting, that I was kinda speechless last time, I didn't know what to say, I didn't want to say the wrong thing, and...
Never stops me, David.
Yeah, but this is what I came up with. You know, dissent is so important in society, and we need to encourage it, the voices of people need to be heard. I have an anniversary coming up, end of this month, it'll be 20 years since I touched a drop of alcohol, and I wonder if anybody knows why you get drunk? Well, in simple terms, the alcohol interferes with the blood cells' ability to repel each other. They all cling together because the electronic bond is broken that keeps them apart, so the surface area of absorption of oxygen is diminished, they're all clumped together. And when everybody gets on the same page, that's when group think happens, and, you know, we need dissent. But this is what I was thinking. You know, the Buddha said that words have the power to both heal and destroy, and when words are true in time, they can change the world. So that's what I was thinking. We just need to be more civil to each other and have our disagreements, and I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Cleo Goss. Before you start, and I take up your time, I want to tell you, I found our meeting that last, was it last weekend or the weekend before? Productive, thank you.
Okay, well, I resent being last, when I had to take off an hour from work to get here on time, and I turned in my card...
So why don't you tell me, I'd have made you first.
I see other people getting to speak twice.
And I agree, that was unfair.
So...
Would you like me to call you first from now on?
I don't care.
I thought you did.
As long as I'm not last.
Okay. I'll keep that in mind.
At our meeting, you told me you needed the commercial sales tax dollars to pay for sheriffs. So rezoning the property across the street from Coors Hill High School to gain these tax sales dollars to purchase more sheriffs will not benefit the local community. This neighborhood...
Cleo, you're being unfair. What I said was, what I said was, remember, that what we're looking at, at this issue, is do we continue to allow sales tax dollars to go to Palmdale rather than to Lancaster? And that that was the primary issue that I was wrestling with.
Okay.
In regards to the Walmart and Target in that particular location. That's what I said.
Okay.
Okay?
I addressed that too.
Okay.
Sales tax dollars generated in this neighborhood, if it goes commercial, will go to fund a sheriff in another neighborhood, a neighborhood that's already got a high crime rate. Currently, the northwest corner is nothing but a vacant lot. The southwest corner is a ranch. Neither property generates a lot of crime, probably none. But turning it into commercial will increase the crime on this property by 100 percent.
Well, we don't know what the science is on that.
Okay, well, if you have no crime, and you have one crime happen, that's 100 percent increase, okay?
You got me, okay.
All right. And this, turning this into a commercial will increase, okay, I already said that, okay, this crime will spill over into the former residential neighborhood. So why does this neighborhood have to pay to reduce crime in another neighborhood? How much sales tax dollars will be generated by turning these lots into commercial? Discount shoppers shifting their patronage from one Lancaster discount store to another Lancaster discount store does not generate new sales tax dollars.
But if it comes from Palmdale to Lancaster, it does.
I'll get you, give me a chance. The more affluent shoppers in the neighborhood wouldn't be caught dead shopping at a discount store. And if they want to buy a discount, they'll catch a sale at an upscale store. Or, better yet, they'll just shop online. That leaves trying to entice the Palmdale shoppers away from the mall and the supercenters located near the mall with easy access to the freeway. This will not happen. Why would a Palmdale resident living only a couple miles away drive down the single-lane road of 60th to reach a discount shopping center when they can take the six-lane road of Rancho Vista Boulevard to a shopping center that not only has discount stores and fast foods, but also provides upscale shopping and has many fine restaurants? If the Rancho Vista-Palmdale shoppers want to shop closer to home, they can patronize 50th Street and End, where they can buy groceries and fast food and not have to fight the school and the church traffic on 60th. I think I still need more time. Why does this neighborhood have to suffer?
I still have some overtime, let's be fair.
Why does this neighborhood have to suffer with an increase in local crime, traffic, water usage, air pollution, trash, and truancy to pay for the reduction in crime in another neighborhood? The only things that will decrease are the safety, school parking, water pressure for those unlucky enough to be down piped from these, from the shopping centers, and home values. Now, how much do you think the homes in this neighborhood are gonna be worth nestled between a prison, a jail, and two discount centers? Turning this residential neighborhood into a commercial center will just be creating the next crime-ridden neighborhood.
I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor, the same caution from every other time that we've talked about 60th and El.
Stop. Understood. You know, before I move on, though, we did have a meeting. Where's Cleo, did she leave? No, where'd Cleo go? Anyway, I met with Cleo and some other people. I do want to, and I sent you an email, but I want everyone to be aware of this, is that I'm concerned that the people living outside the city in that area be fully informed every step of the way of this process. There tends to be a systemic, I'm trying to think of a euphemism for it, but what it does is, you know, by the time it gets to us, it's pretty well decided. You know, this issue's gonna be decided in the general plan, it's gonna be decided on the planning commission. There's a lot of steps that I think that the people outside the city do not feel welcome in attending, and I want to correct that imbalance. Not that they're not welcome, but they don't feel welcome. And so I think we need to do a better effort at informing the people in Coors Hill that, one, their input is more than welcome, that they be advised of every step of the process that will affect whether or not the shopping center goes in that location or another location, and that they be given the opportunity for the input. And just so you folks understand what I was, been talking to them about, is when it gets to the planning commission stage, the, I want to change the time limits, that the different groups have to talk without it being unreasonable, and we talked about some possibilities which haven't, obviously, been decided yet. So that's my thinking, and that was the gist of my meeting with them. And I think we could go a long ways to preventing problems if it just stays as open as possible. And that's why I also told them my concern, you know. My concern is, is the tax base. We need the tax base for the law enforcement, because no matter what, we're gonna have a lower crime rate than Palmdale. Just so you know.
Mr. Mayor, we have a meeting, as a follow-up to that, we do have a meeting scheduled with you later on the same issue to address those concerns.
Terrific. Mr. Abber, this time only. Have to have the cards in soon. Okay, but come on up.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. I just wanted to come down here today because over the years, I've had a lot of dealings with the city and raised a lot of issues. And I came here this evening because I want to commend Mr. Bozigan, who, whether he was in redevelopment, or he's been our city manager, or assistant city manager, when I've called with my concerns, which just very recently, I had a graffiti problem in my neighborhood. I had to call the city about three or four or five times. It only took one call to Mr. Bozigan, and we didn't get a chance to speak. But the problem got rectified today, and I just want to commend Mr. Bozigan, who's an excellent city manager and an excellent asset to our community. And I just wanted to welcome you, the council, I've not been before this council before, and I want to thank you. And also, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your consideration, my placement on the planning commission. I know that I was passed up, but I appreciate your letter and your time telling me to, in the future, keep continuing to, you know, to try to find a spot for me to help serve my community in a way that we can grow in a responsible way and a direction that all the citizens want. Thank you very much.
Mr. Abber, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, as much as I appreciate his comments, I'd like to commend Julie Worrell and our Public Works Department, who actually took care of Mr. Abber's problem today.
You know, what they're doing with code enforcement is truly remarkable. I mean, my response to it was, how do I get this into my office? It is that efficient and effective and 21st century. I'm just thrilled with it. All right, any announcements?
Council reports.
I've called in, man.
Oh, you did? Well, come on up, I'm sorry. You know, it's that darn vice mayor, he... See what happens, and you'll let him, won't let him speak?
Thank you very much, Mayor Parrish and council. I just wanted to speak on the thrift shop, which is, of course, the resource, the thrift provides the money for the Thrift Resource Center. And I think that's a great effort, and I'm all for it. I was disappointed, though, when we went out to the thrift store the other day, and it was a shambles. They need about three or four times the space that they've got. I know that's not a city function.
If I can interrupt you for just a second, which thrift store are we referring to?
The one out on I, I believe it was, near Third, East Third.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. And everything was very disorganized, and they just had too much stuff for the space therein. You know, with all of the empty buildings and stuff around town, it looked like we might be able to entice some of these people to make room for an expanded thrift store there and give these people a break, because that's a very good effort, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
You know, that's an interesting idea. I'm wondering if there's some way to, let's talk about that. I mean, I mean, there might be an incentive that the city could provide, I don't know, we'll look at it. Okay? You know, Mark will tell me who in the city is best able to help us with that, and let's sit down and see and brainstorm it. See if we can come up with something outside the box, all right?
Thank you, sir.
Or inside the box, I guess. Thank you. Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have a report, Councilwoman Sherri Marcus and I, on the AVTA. And just a couple notes, I think all the council members have been given a report for this, so they can look over, just a couple highlights. One of the things that we're looking at, and AVTA staff has been working on, and Councilwoman Marcus and I both support, is a revamp of the JPA for the AVTA. And one of the things is that we now have a TAC that has, or a Technical Advisory Committee that's been put on through the JPA, and we're thinking of actually removing that and updating it so that it actually builds more flexibility and communication between all the government agencies, which would be the County of Los Angeles, the City of Palmdale, and the City of Lancaster. We also just got done passing a budget of $30 million, and we also, we added a $300,000 appropriations for a contract with the Sheriff's Department for public safety in that also. So there's just some of the highlights for you.
Do we have deputies on any of these buses? How does that work?
No, I think they have some, some from the MTA that, that, there's MTA deputies that come, I think there's one every so often. Mark, I've known... We subsidize a deputy for our representative, and all of the nine cities in the area do it. It's a relationship, quite frankly, we're looking at right now.
What's the safety record for the Antle Valley Transportation Agency in regards to crime? I mean, are the buses safe?
The buses are safe, they have a contract with the Sheriff's Department that they have in particular during, I'm sorry, Ron, but during... I've asked about the, you know, how many, I actually rode the bus and talked to the bus drivers and said what kind of, I said the responses are pretty good, but they don't have many problems. A lot of times what they have is, a lot of the disabled or people going to the mental wellness programs over here that we have are on the buses, and so sometimes there's a problem with, you know, getting them on or off if they're having a problem that day, and that's, it's not, that's, was their biggest concern sometimes. But they've gotten to know the particular people that ride their bus and have a good relationship with them, and usually there's not a problem.
Okay, good. So you guys are gonna be coming forward with something?
What's that?
You're gonna revamp it?
Oh, the JPA, yeah, the staff is looking at it, and our staff, Nicole West is an excellent staff member from engineering, and she's looking at it also, along with, I don't see her tonight, but Barbara Boswell has been helping out with the agency at looking at their budget and seeing if we can look at revamping some of that and spend the money more wisely.
Okay, terrific.
It's coming out.
Thank you. Any other reports? Any discussion? We adjourned to closed session? We adjourned to closed session? Okay, good. We'll be back. I'd invite you to come, bud.
Mr. Mayor, the city council and redevelopment agency met in closed session under Government Code Section 549, 56.8, concerning real property negotiations on the properties listed on the agenda, gave direction to negotiators concerning those negotiations.
And a personal friend to many of us, and we're, we're adjourning in memory of her. She passed, what, two weeks ago, wasn't she? Yes, okay. Thanks, folks. See you later.